The regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council is being called to order at 6:25 PM. Madam Clerk, please take your oral call.
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Mo Baydoun.
Here.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Next up is a pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance will be led by our Mayor Bazey.
Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Next up on our agenda is agenda approval. Councilman Baydoun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda of the regular meeting of June 28, 2022, as submitted.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydoun, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on the agenda approval? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried, ayes have it. Next up on the agenda is approval of the minutes for A.
Council Chair.
Uh, Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of June 14, 2022, as outlined in four dash A.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Baydoun. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is item four B. Uh, Councilman Baydoun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 14, 2022, as outlined in four B.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Baydoun, supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next up on the agenda is public hearings in common from a ge- on agenda items only. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go to Zoom first. Anybody on Zoom will have an opportunity to speak. You'll have three minutes. I'm sorry, two minutes. Please state your name, the street that you live on, and the city that you live in. Uh, Madam Clerk, I see two of them on there.
I have Tamara Watt.
Two minutes.
Hello?
Okay, so Ms. Tamara Watt, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Tamara Watt. I am actually an employee here with the city of Dearborn Heights. I do belong to the DHPA TPOAM Union. I'm gonna be speaking on agenda item eight A. Um, I hope while voting on this today, you keep in mind how this union feels. I can't speak for the whole union, but I'm 100% positive I am speaking for most. Be careful of your words while discussing this agenda item. Because as much as you may be thinking this is good, that we came to an agreement, you need to realize this union, once again, got the short end of the stick because we are always strong-armed to accept. We do not have binding arbitration, and our next step would be fact-finding, which could take another six months to a year. Then left with the last best offer, which would be less than what this contract has. The only reason most voted yes is because it brings some money to our pockets now. Another reason is because it expires in one year, and then we go back to the table in six months. Let's not sit here tonight and pretend this is a good thing. Even you council got a 9% raise, us 1%. Let me also remind you that just because your council secretary is union, that means she will in two years only receive around $2,400. But the mayor's secretary in two years with her 26% increase will make more than $22,000 than what she was. This administration says how they can't afford to increase us, but somehow can improve a helicopter as an expense for an event. That's sad, and only one example. If I give more, we could be here all night. Cuts can be made in many other places, yet time and time again, it is always at the expense of the- of this union's pockets. I will wrap this
Wait, Tamara, Tamara, you got, you got cut off. Can you, can you go ahead and repeat? You said, "I will," and then you got cut off.
Sorry, I said, "I will wrap this up by again asking council to please be mindful when speaking on this item." We don't need to hear how you believe we should be increased to meet comparables or inflation like all non-union and new staff. You are also in charge of financials and approving expenses. I do encourage a yes vote. I'm sorry, I'm literally over.
I'm gonna give you 15 more seconds because of the cutoff. Go ahead.
Okay. I do encourage a yes vote because my signing bonus will cover to keep a full tank of gas the next couple months, and my 1% increase will cover groceries for a week. It's not much, but at least for now, it's more than their last offer. And unfortunately, we know when to fold. And left with a very limited options, which this administration uses to their benefits. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tamara. Uh, I see another one here on Zoom. There's Barbara Sapirsky. Uh, please go ahead. You have two minutes. Please state your name, street that you live on, and the city that you live in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, my name is Barbara Sapirsky. I live on Woodward Circle in Dearborn Heights. This concerns the animal ordinance. I am opposed to it. I could not understand why an emergency animal ordinance is being proposed. As written, it is extremely cruel. I suggest the city-
Wait, Barb, Barb, we lost you when you said extremely cruel, and we lost the rest of it. Can you hear us?
This is from Father-
Wait, Barb, Barb, I'm sorry, we lost you after you said it's extremely cruel. So can you start from there, and I will give you a little bit of additional time?
Okay.
There was an internet disconnection.
Okay. Um, my connection seems to be fine, so, okay. As I said, I thought the ordinance was as it's- Okay, did you get that?
Wait, Barb, you got cut off again, I'm sorry. We, unfortunately, ladies and gentlemen, this is on our end. Um, and I know we're looking into it. We just hired a IT director, and this is gonna be looked into for sure.
And we did check onto it, and I'm hardwired. It's supposed to be coming through this, so it's, I'm not through Wi-Fi. I'm actually hardwired into the-
Okay. It will be looked into. Barb, go ahead and continue. We'll give you another minute and 45 seconds, so this way you didn't lose too much time.
I suggest the city look at best practice ordinances from other cities. Other cities have discounted TNR programs and work with rescuers and shelters. Not being able to feed feral cats and dogs will impair the ability of rescuers to capture them and to help them, including TNR, which is trap, neuter, and release. It is cruel to let them starve. They will need to kill wild animals to survive, subjecting them and themselves to disease and trauma and painful deaths. Their numbers will not decrease, as they will still be procreating. Most of what you call feral are not feral, but belong to people that abandoned them. Rats will also not disappear, as the garbage and dog poop has not been addressed. And the so-called feral cats and dogs kill the rats, decreasing their populations. Why do you think farmers have barn cats? And as I was waiting for this meeting to start, they had on the news that because of global warming, the activity and amount of mice are increasing in the United States. What exactly is the bias against more and plants? Do you expect us to have artificial turf and cut down all the nut trees because of squirrels? And berry trees because of birds? And remove flowers? This makes no sense. The ordinance is poorly written, cruel, and inhumane, and needs input from citizens and best practices. I hope it will be disapproved, or at least tabled, to allow more discussion with citizen input, as well as incorporation of evidence-based information. What are we teaching our children when a city does not help its animals in need, but allows them to starve to death and suffer? Thank you for letting me have my say, and I hope this will be opposed.
Thank you very much, Barbara, much appreciated. Uh, next up, we have Beth Frank. Please state your name, street you live on, and the city you live in. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Beth Frank. I live in Saginaw, Michigan. Um, I am president and founder of Community Cats United, Inc. We have over 75,000 members in 124 countries in all 50 US states, including many, many in Michigan. I'm wanting to talk about the community cat issue. TNR works. Trapping, killing, and feeding bans do not. We have compassionate community members here that want to help these cats. Let's let them do it. TNR is cost-effective, and it's efficient, Henry. Trition, and through stopping the reproduction cycle. Consists of spay and neuter, and ear chip, and a rabies vaccination. The rabies vaccination can last up to six years, which will improve your public health. Also, these cats-
Barb, you got, um, Beth, you got cut off at these cats.
Okay, these cats are great at killing rodents and keeping them away, another health benefit. Um, my group, back in May of this year, TNR'd 21 cats in Dearborn Heights for some senior feeders. So we'd like to continue this relationship and put together a program where we can address the community cat situation. We have an attorney we work with that does TNR ordinances for free, and she will tailor them to the needs of the community. My last comments. A compassionate and proactive community. One that other cities can use as a model. We can do this, thank you.
Thank you very much, Beth. Next up, we have Sally. Uh, the name moved around now. Sally, uh, are you there? Yep, there you are. Sally Petrella. Uh, you have two minutes. Please state your name, street, and the city you live in.
Uh, my name is Sally Petrella. Heights. And my apologies for getting on this meeting late, but am I, uh, is it possible for me to comment about the Warren Valley Golf Course at this meeting?
Yes, it is, it's on the agenda, go ahead.
Okay, okay. Um, I am very concerned about the contract that is being considered. Um, the Warren Valley Golf Course used to be part of public parkland, and I really appreciated the, the Dearborn Heights mayor acquiring it so that it would remain parkland and golf course. And, um, it's really important to all of us as community residents to have that green space. It's important also for the, the Rouge River that goes through there, as it also provides a pla- a place for the river to flood without harming homes and things like that. Um, I'm just concerned about the trajectory right now, and a lot of interest on the part of real estate agents in developing in the floodplain, which in this day and age, with this, this community purchasing homes to take them out in E Course Creek, I, I don't understand why there's talk about development in that golf course. And I just wanna speak strongly for protecting that and letting it remain as a golf course, and doing some other city councils or other mayors may-
Sally, you got cut off, you got cut off at doing some, if you don't mind repeating the rest of it?
Um, I'm just, can, we, we need permanent protection for that golf course so that it does not get developed and that it remains public land and remains green space. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Sally. Anybody else on Zoom? Okay, we got, uh, DBLAK on Zoom. Uh, please go ahead, you have two minutes.
Hi, Dan Blankenship, Evangeline. Uh, I wanna talk about the Warren Valley Golf Course. Um, I've seen the rough draft that was proposed. And the Isa Brothers' original-
You know, um, if you don't mind, sir, we're having a hard time hearing you, and it could be our internet connection. If you could do me a favor, speak as loud as you can, please. And to the mic, thank you.
In the Isa Brothers' original bid, he said they had a golf course management company ready to go when the contract was signed.
Uh, so wait, sir, uh, you're coming in very, very, very low. Unless, are you guys having a hard time hearing him? Yeah, nobody's been able to hear you. If you don't mind coming as close as you can to the microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, but just, uh, it's okay, be a little louder. I know, you're gonna-
Your voice a little louder.
Yeah, a little bit louder if you can.
Okay. In the Isa Brothers' original bid, he submitted, he said he had a course management company ready to go. In the draft that has been proposed, it says that is not true. Does that not negate his bid that he is not ready to fulfill the needs of the golf course as he said he would? That's my first question. My second, my second question would be, now that the golf course has deteriorated to the point that it is, how are you guys going to foot that bill when they come to you and tell you it's $2, $3, $5 million to bring that course back up to par? And now you guys are going to say, "Oh, we can't afford that. We're gonna have to do something else other than a golf course." Because through you guys' own neglect, both the administration and the council, you guys have let that, that course go to absolute crap. Through your own neglect, you are terrible stewards of the city property. Can anybody answer either of those two questions? What are you going to do when they come to you with that bill for millions of dollars to get that course back into shape? And is that contract not negated because he is not ready to go?
Council Chair. Okay, I just wanna make sure I heard you correctly. So the first question you said is, what are we gonna do as council members and as administration based on your, your, um, opinion that the golf course has been let go? And then the second, what was the second question, sir? Because, again, you're coming in very, very low.
Wait a minute, it's not my opinion that the golf course has gone to crap. It's absolute fact. So my first question was, what are you guys gonna do when they come to you, when whatever, when, whenever you guys get a golf, golf course company to come in there and run that course, they come to you and give you a $2, $3, $5 million bill to get that course back into shape? What are you going to do then? And is not the Isa Brothers' bid, because he does not have a course management company ready to go as he said in his original bid, does that not negate his bid, or his, the contract?
Okay, so your first question is, what are we gonna do if they come, if, if the management company, whoever it is, is taking it over, comes back to us with $2 to $3 million in, um, uh, expense to bring the course, back to quote-unquote "normal"? And the second question was in regards to the Isa Brothers. Again, they got cut, unless I'm having a hard time hearing them, can anybody?
Does it negate the bid because the bid said he was gonna have a golf course management company? That's the guy's question.
Okay, so the second question was, does it negate the bid? Because he does not have a management, uh, company to manage the golf course part? Is that correct, sir?
Correct. And I don't wanna see these brothers lose this. I just, I just want that course done right. You know, if he's got somebody ready to go, more power to him, and I'll help him out. But if, if somebody else can come in there and get it going right away, let it go that way.
Okay. I, I appreciate it. I'm not sure if anybody in the administration would like to answer those questions. We will be going into a discussion in regards to the golf course in a bit, but I wanted to give you your opportunity. And then, at that point, any council member that would like to answer, gentlemen, you're, you're, you're welcome to. But I, I will make this statement, as I've said before, and I've said it at almost every council meeting just about. It is staying a golf course. But-
Next, what I wanna say is, talk about selling, selling the golf course and, and developing-
Microphone, thank you.
This, this talk about selling the golf course or developing on it? I don't know where that rumor started, but we've said it time and time and time again. It's staying a golf course. How much more clear does everybody need? I understand it's in disarray right now, but that wasn't the greatest golf course on the planet five years ago, or even a year ago.
Council Chair.
No, don't tell me it's a lie, I've heard about that.
Sir, if you don't mind in the audience, please, you'll have your opportunity to speak. Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. Um, next, anybody up on Zoom?
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
I'd like to reply to one of his statements.
Go ahead.
Uh, he's, he's, he is correct when he, he stated that the city are, was, is, was in our poor stewards of maintaining the resident's golf course.
It's true.
I'd like to, that's my opinion. I've been, I've been very vocal about that from the beginning. I've had numerous ideas about maintaining the golf course with no response. And, uh, it, shame on the city of Dearborn Heights for letting that golf course get to the condition it is right now. We should've concentrated on, first thing, open, the easiest and cheapest thing for us to do would be this spring is to open that golf course. And that golf course could've been opened right now with a pro shop. And we could've worked, we could've dealt with the banquet hall, uh, as we are right now. We got good plans for the banquet hall. The current bidder has got some good ideas. But the cheapest and easiest thing would've had that golf course open right away. It was opened on the last day of the season last year. Every year, they repair the cart, the cart pass with, with, you know, the hot patch. And, uh, for this to get into this condition right now, where we, we, the city of Dearborn Heights administration, city council, we failed the residents of Dearborn Heights in letting this golf course get to the condition it is now. I'm sorry, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Um, Sally Petrella, if I'm not mistaken, you've already spoken, correct, on? Yes, you did already, so I apologize, it is, it is one time, ma'am. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and go to members of the audience. If anybody in the audience would like to come up and speak, you'll have two minutes. On any of the agenda items, please state your name, city, and street.
Good evening, Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, I won't speak too long on some of these items, because I know there's other people that will speak on them. Um, regarding 11A, the animal ordinance, uh, that first paragraph about indirectly feeding animals, my children all pointed out, when I read it to them, no comment for me, does that not ban our garden? If we can't indirectly feed wild animals, if I have a garden, rabbits are gonna come eat it. Same as the grass lady said that on the phone. Um, regarding the Warren Valley Golf Course, I think the contract is not ideal for the city. Um, and it definitely needs to be looked at. A, um, another resident, uh, shared an idea to have a town hall for the community before the contract is signed, where the city can show what the vision is for the con, for, for the golf course, and then get input from the residents about what we would like to see there. Like, it's great that you guys are talking about your ideas for swimming pools. We have ideas too. There's not a big chance for us to get that out there. Um, eight A, the contract, it's a shame that our employees are not even getting 3%. Inflation is at 9, 10, almost, and we're giving 1% raise. I can't, I can't even. And then, I did speak to Councilman Muscat about this, I know he'll bring it up, but the, there was a math error on the budget amendments, the revenues. It said there was $725,000 in additional revenues that had been planned for. It's actually negative $1,927,551, so it's approximately a $3 million difference from what was stated in the backup. So I know Councilman Muscat's got that under control. Thank you, Councilman Muscat. And that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Come on up.
Good evening, oop, good evening, Mayor. Council President, Honorable Councilman, my name's Tom Tofelsky, Fairmont Street, Dearborn, Michigan. Many of you might know I've served in a similar role to you in the city of Dearborn, and I, I understand and appreciate tonight's item, uh, number 12, uh, the Isa Brothers' proposed agreement for the Warren Valley Golf Course. Uh, I'm not here to, uh, tell you anything other than experiences that I had as a council president, council member in the city of Dearborn with the Isa Brothers. They took a property in Detroit, albeit in Detroit, it was not in Dearborn, but it borders our easternmost border. It was an unimproved property, and they converted it into something that was clean, usable, taxable, and it frankly helped cat, it was a catalyst for the other properties on the Dearborn side. I know this is a polarizing issue, because there are people, and I live on Dearborn Hills Golf Course, so I can speak to a golf course that is no longer operational. I wish we had somebody that was not the city that would come in with their own money and try and improve that course. Um, I can't speak to the operation, I can speak to telling you that when he comes in, and I've seen his places in Troy, the different businesses that him and his family and his brothers have owned, they do a phenomenal job and they spare no expense. Whether this golf course, uh, taking over the golf course will be the pinnacle that everybody hopes it will, that I can't speak to. All I can tell you is, the man and the family put their money where their mouth is, and if they say they're gonna go in and do some things with unimproved, to improve the property, keep the taxes, taxable value of the homes around, because that's one of the things I see in my neighborhood we're facing. So, um, again, I'm here to support it, uh, but you will ultimately make the final decision on that. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Good evening, I'm Sarah Reynolds, I live on Woodell in Dearborn Heights. Um, I did some research from HSUS, the Humane Society of the United States, and, uh, they have literature specifically regarding feeding bans. I'm speaking to item 11A. I quote, "The logic behind feeding bans is that if no one feeds free roaming cats, the cats will go away. This rarely works, because there may be more than one feeder, feeders will resist. Enforcement is difficult and unpopular with caring citizens, and there are other sources of food, including dumpsters, garbage cans, and wildlife. Feral cats are territorial animals who can survive for weeks without food and will not easily or quickly leave their territory to search for new food sources. Instead, they tend to move closer to homes and businesses as they grow hungrier and more desperate. In addition, the cats will continue to reproduce despite the effort to starve them out, resulting in the visible deaths of many kittens." Do you want your kids seeing dead kittens? A second reason why feeding bans are rarely effective is that they are nearly impossible to enforce. Repeated experience has shown that people who care about the cat's welfare will go to great lengths risking their homes, jobs, and even their liberty to, to feed starving animals. Someone determined to feed the cats will usually succeed without being detected, no matter the threatened, threatened penalties. As a result, feeding bans, if enforced, tend to make the situation much worse instead of better. I think the HSUS has a pretty good authority on that. We all know Dearborn Heights has rat and mouse problems, cats can only help that. People just wanna help starving animals. Guess that's my time.
Thank you very much, Sally, appreciate it. Sarah, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Zuhair Abdulhaq.
Good evening. Uh, Mr. Abdulhaq, I'm sorry.
I did ask for a minute extra, I may not need it. I just, uh, I learned when, uh, compliment has to be given for good work. I am the one who's going to say it. I wanna thank Mayor Bazey for what he's doing at the police department. And I hope he will be the voice of those officers who were hired after 2011, and they lost their health care, which they should've had since the day they were hired. And unfortunately, their colleagues, they did not really fight, they did not really fight for them to give them the health care when they retire. So I hope, Mayor, you will be their voice, and you will try, if the budget allowed, to give them that health care. About the golf course, my issue is the appearance of impropriety when it comes to contracts. Mr. Shank, the lawyer for Mr. Isa, and nothing against Mr. Isa, I have nothing but good things to say about Mr. Isa. Mr. Shank was your lawyer, the city council lawyer. You let him terminate his contract on the 22nd of February. The clerk sent the letter, I would assume, a couple weeks after that, which put it in probably middle, uh, March. And on the 23rd of March, you awarded concession, or the 22nd of March, to awarded the concession to Mr. Isa. Now, the same lawyer who represented you guys, represented the city, is bringing a proposal for you to vote on it. I don't know if it is legal or not, but definitely it's unethical, and it does not look good at all for this body and for the city to have someone who represented us as ci, as city- at all for this body and for the city to have someone who represented us as city coming with a proposal for a client, for you to go ahead and approve it. And I don't know if he had information before he was terminated, which helped him to do this proposal. This proposal, in my opinion, does not meet in any way, shape, or form the RFP which you put out. Look at it in every detail. It's totally different proposal. If you are accepting different proposal than the RFP, then go open it and ask for other proposals to come in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Patrick Gurek. I live on Clippert Street in Dearborn Heights. I'm here to talk about the special animal ordinance. So I don't have conversation of stats and statistics. I have my personal observations. I have lived in the city for 10 years. My grandma lived here for 40 years before that. So a few years ago, I noticed a lot of sickly cats coming around my house. I also had a really big problem with rats. I started putting food out, just a little bit at first, food and water, and the cats started to look better. The cats started to look healthier. Not only that, did I not have any more problems with rats. Also, my neighbors don't either. My neighbors had a regular appointment with a termination service, and they were saying, "No, we can't find anything. You're good." And they got three of those, "Stop going to that service." I pay out of my own pocket for food, for medical care. I've become part of a TNR program, all because I see the value of the cats around me. And I would prefer them not starved to death. There is less fighting, because you can actively hear it when cats are fighting. I have other wildlife that comes on my property, excuse me, but rarely. When they do, they come, they eat, there is no combat. These cats produce no nuisance. They simply are there to help with the rodents and, you know, have life. I provide shelter for them, medical care for them, and food out of my own pocket. This is not costing the city anything. So I can't imagine why you would say, "I can't do this anymore." Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Can you mention? Okay, for those on Zoom, we've already gone to Zoom, but I will go back to Zoom in case somebody else has something, as long as you've not spoken already. So I will go back to Zoom in a bit. Hello, ma'am.
Hi, Nikki Buckman.
Thank you.
Academy Street. I'm a resident and also a 25-year employee of the city. I'm going to be talking about 8A. Tonight, you have in front of you for consideration a proposed agreement that was presented to the union, an agreement that the union has waited almost an entire full year for. And if I'm being honest, it is not something this administration should be proud of. While administration, department heads, and non-union receive substantial raises, some as much as 30-plus percent, and this very council body was even given a 9% raise, my union was offered a 1% raise with a one-time $2,000 signing bonus. For myself and many others, that 1% raise is roughly $400 a year increase, or $15 per pay period. After the federal bonus tax, we will get roughly $1,460 from that $2,000 bonus. I'm currently on a medical leave from work, and that bonus will not even cover my medical bills. Administration feels that this 1% raise is adequate enough to cover the rising gas prices and increase in the cost of living. We were basically forced into accepting this offer, and thankfully, it's only a one-year contract. We could have voted no, but if we did, administration would surely drag their feet for another year or come up with some other reason or excuse as to why they cannot negotiate, as they have already used those tactics in the past. Why wouldn't they? Dragging their feet would mean no increase to our pay, and they know we do not have binding arbitration to help move the process along. Ultimately, this administration has shown exactly what they feel and think their union members are worth, and that is 1%. I will end on this, something I read, and it hit home. "The effective leader recognizes that they are more dependent on their people than their people are on them."
Thank you, ma'am. Hello, ma'am.
Good evening.
City, street, two minutes.
My name is Malak Fawaz. I am at Dearborn Heights resident on Centralia Street. I am against the proposal to outlaw feeding of community cats. Those community cats are mostly abandoned or lost pets.
Close to my, thank you.
Those cats are mostly abandoned or lost pets. They are susceptible to injuries and hunger. A lot of them would show up at the door with, like, ribs sticking through the skin from hunger, or disabilities, vision, or other problems. So it is inhumane and psychologically disturbing to just watch them starve and die. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Jason Piersall. I'm a resident of Detroit. I have spent my professional career as an industry executive for golf course management companies, as a general counsel. I'm also the owner and operator of a golf course here in Michigan called Flushing Valley Golf Course.
Closer microphone, please. It's hard to hear.
Is that better?
As close as you can. Thank you.
All right. My name is Jason Piersall. I have spent my professional career as an industry executive in the golf industry, general counsel of a management company, the owner operator of a golf course here in Michigan. Mr. Isa brought me on his team the end of April and early, or maybe early May, because I've experienced a similar project. We purchased Flushing Valley Golf Course just north of Flint in 2015. Like Warren Valley, Flushing Valley was closed down for a summer. We inherited it with no equipment, no staff, and we were starting from scratch. The next year, we had the golf course open, and within five years, we flipped the course successfully for a good return on our interest. Over the last 45 days, we've had two superintendents out at the golf course. We've inspected the grounds, the irrigation, the drainage, the sand traps, the current equipment, the maintenance shed, the cart pass. Mr. Isa gave me a mandate to create a plan and budget to open the golf course by the end of the year. After the inspection and the current condition of the golf course, without equipment, without staff, without the legacy knowledge, in my professional opinion, I don't think that'd be advisable for the long-term interest of the golf course. That said, I have a budget in front of me that we're prepared to submit to you to open the golf course. We have a high of $514,000, a low of $1.2 million. That would get the golf course open for 18 holes by 2023. The plan is to continue to open another 27 holes by 2024, and then to work with the community to decide if it makes sense to open the course as 36 holes, or potentially put in a pool, dome, driving range, or other recreational purposes with the final nine holes. Any questions I'm happy to answer from Mr. Isa.
Just a quick question, I just want to clarify. So you don't believe in your expertise that you'd be able to open it by 2000, by next year?
By next year is definitely...
Beginning?
Yeah, by 2023, the beginning of the year, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
But by the end of 2020, 22...
What was the number again?
Yeah, here, I actually prepared a budget for council. We can submit this as well. The low is $519,900, the high is $1.14 million.
$1.1?
$1.14. That also includes the city would acquire and own all of the equipment. Labor is broken out, bringing in contractors to repair the irrigation system and the drainage system. They've also been, you know, we've received estimates from them, includes sand, you know, renovations of all the bunkers, but we have a full budget for you.
Okay. Council chair. Thank you, ma'am. Question for us. What do you think the biggest problem was to have the golf course get into this condition?
Hasn't been maintained properly for years.
For years?
Yeah.
How do you know that?
I played the course frequently for the last couple of years, and it's been maintained somewhat satisfactory. I mean, it's been playable, but I think the community deserves it better, and I know Mr. Isa's plans are to provide better.
Okay. Thank you, sir. If you don't mind, microphone. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sarah Malik. I'm on Outer Drive. I'm a Dearborn Heights resident. As an animal rights activist, I'm very concerned about this feeding ban that the city is trying to put in place. I'm concerned that this ban is being decided on without any regard to the humane way of resolving the rodent problem. Some argue that feeding cats attracts rodents. Feeding cats doesn't attract rodents. The garbage that's not properly contained in our yards that are not properly maintained do. We've been feeding cats for over 10 years, and we have never had a rodent problem in or near our yard. The food we leave out for our cats is usually gone within 20 minutes. Some communities throughout the country have controlled feeding times to minimize the food attracting unwanted nighttime animals. Why can't Dearborn Heights put some effort into resolving this problem instead of taking what they think is the easy way out? It's really not. Others argue that feeding cats will take away their need to hunt rodents. Cats have a hunting instinct. A healthy cat will not say no to hunting. As long as they're healthy, they'll hunt. The cats we allow to starve in our streets will become too weak to hunt. I beg the city to be proactive about controlling the feral cat population. And the only humane way to fix this issue is by educating and getting more people involved in trap, neuter, and release. TNR is a positive way that the city can contribute to controlling feral animals. Maybe the council could have residents register in a local TNR program, and as a person who practices TNR, I've spent my hard-earned money to make a difference in our community the humane way. Please don't think that you're solving an issue while you're not even applying a Band-Aid on it. I just want our city to remember that the same creator who created us also created these voiceless souls. He gave them the sense of hunger and the sense of fear. He wouldn't appreciate us starving his creatures, and I just want you to keep that in mind. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Rebecca Kipers. I live on Waddell Street in Dearborn Heights, and I have a territorial indoor cat who, my life would be a lot easier if it was not set off by a bunch of feral cats. So I support efforts to limit the feral cat population, but I'm very concerned that this particular proposed ordinance would have the opposite effect, that feeding the feral cats makes them much easier to trap and provide to the TNR programs, neutering and spaying them, and removing that means that we're more likely to have a uncontrolled population growth rather than getting rid of them. So, well, I understand the intent was, would be helpful. I think we need to work out a different proposal on how to limit the... So, thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Lisa Aloue, and I live on Campus Drive in Dearborn Heights. I'm here to speak on item 11A, the proposal to prohibit ground feeding of wild animals and the feeding of feral cats. So first I want to say is good evening to everyone tonight, and thank you, Mayor Bazey, and all of the council members that I spoke with yesterday and today. And I appreciate that you took that time to address my concerns, including myself. There's many individuals in this community who practice TNR, which we know is trap, neuter, and release of feral animals. Part of this process includes a vet visit to assess health of the cat and a rabies shot. We would like to come together and create a volunteer Dearborn Heights TNR group. Our goal is to work with the city of Dearborn Heights so that we can humanely reduce the population of feral cats. Beth Frank, the expert that spoke earlier via Zoom, supports many communities who want to address the feral cat issue, and she said she is ready and willing to bring her experience, her wealth of resources, and connections to support our efforts. Today, I also spoke with Bill Dishroom, our ordinance director, who is willing to guide and work alongside our volunteer TNR group. With his knowledge and experience, I am confident we can come up with a policy and procedures on how to run an effective TNR group that will not only benefit feral cats but also the city and its residents. We are asking you to think about this alternative solution and give us the time to put the steps together to form a successful volunteer TNR program. Feeding bans are ineffective. They lack scientific support and are cruel, and do not come close to achieving goals. With a feeding ban in place, as people said, TNR is going to be impossible to carry out. If our community is concerned about our community cat population, TNR is the solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers. My name is Ali Sayed, founder and CEO of Hype Athletics, and a huge supporter of recreation for kids and adults in the city of Dearborn Heights. And I've been asked to come and speak on an agreed-upon term, an MOU that we've developed with the Isa Brothers regarding the golf course. Hype has agreed to collaborate with the Isa Brothers in providing youth services, youth training programs, youth golf programs, and travel teams so the kids can compete. So we're really excited for the partnership that the council members and the mayor have all agreed and supported on back in February. I know that you're still undergoing, you know, the terms of the contract, and I know things are going to change. I encourage you to expedite it. I've had the chance to walk the entire parcel and played on it for several years. And we all know, it's a good course, you know, and we can't let good, the great get in the way of good, right? Good is good. But, you know, as Dearborn Heights is progressing to be a beautiful city led by, you know, wonderful leaders, you know, it's time for change. Let's not be afraid to innovate. Let's not be afraid to, you know, grow this golf course with a visionary leader. And I stand firm in supporting your decision. And with the lead of the Isa Brothers, I know, I'm confident that that golf course is going to be prestigious based on his track record and based on his leadership. I feel very confident that we're going to get the job done together. So I just encourage you guys to expedite it and move forward with this process so there can be less chatter about potential, you know, corruption and/or other negative perceptions that are being displayed around the city. We have a lot of good leaders in this community, a lot of good people. Let's move forward and do the right thing. All right? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Sayed.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Canelis. I live on Haast Street. I live on Haast Street between Berwin and Centralia. We're having an issue over there about the speeding traffic. Within the last three months, I think within Kenlock...
Sorry, I have to interrupt you. I apologize.
What?
Because at this particular point, it's only on agenda items, so if you want to speak in regards to speeding, which I'm in agreement with, you'd have to speak during the public comments section at the end of the meeting. I apologize.
At then? Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Hello, my name's Anna Kipers. I live on... Oh, sorry. Hello, my name's Anna... Too loud, or... Okay. My name's Anna Kipers. I live on Waddell Street in Dearborn Heights, and I'm also here to oppose Ordinance 11 on the feeding ban. I think everyone's pretty much covered, but I just want to say I was looking for some hard numbers on it, and one, there aren't really much on either way. But when I Googled feeding bans, they're just, it's page after page of failed cities, like just articles, newspapers talking about, like, just failed city after failed city. They just don't work. And so I just really would like to ask the council to talk to experts on feral cat populations before deciding on an ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Sir, if you don't mind, was there... Just for the young lady in the back, were you going to be going again? I'm not sure. Are you in line or you're...
Sure.
No, I don't know who... No, she's already spoken, but are you in line or you're outside?
I'm going to wait till the end, like...
Okay, got you. Go ahead, sir. Come on up.
Cass Swigson, Virgil, Dearborn Heights. I take exception to what this gentleman said. He's played five times at the Warren Valley Golf Course, and he thought it was pretty bad. I don't know what he was expecting to do, shoot 72 on that golf course, or is he expecting a golf course like the Masters, Oakland Hills, or what? We had a good golf course for 90-some years now, almost 100, and what he's expecting, I don't know. I've worked there for many years, and I've played there for many years. My brother's played there and Gaddy, and so did I. And I do take exception to this, what this gentleman said. And we had a good man over there, and he just threw them out. I don't know why. But I'd love to see this course come back and be a course, and the people around there want it as a course. And this gentleman wants me to teach him how to play golf? Fix the course, and I'll teach you how to play golf. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come on up, sir.
Pat O'Leary, Vernon Street, Dearborn Heights. I didn't catch what company you were with.
Club Caddy.
Club Caddy? Okay. You're ready to, prepared to go and fix this course right now?
Sir, if you don't mind, you got to speak through the council chair. Sorry.
Is he ready to go and prepared to fix this course right now, starting today?
Yeah, we can't ask members of the audience. So if you don't mind, you could ask... So if you don't mind, you could ask whatever questions, and then, you know, we'll go from there.
Okay, are we ready to fix this course starting today?
Okay, I can tell you this, the city council and the mayor, the administration, and whoever eventually gets this contract are all on board to make sure this thing goes forward towards the golf course.
Well, that's the first three words of his property is Warren Valley Golf Course. And alls I'd heard about is this clubhouse. Now, I have nothing against the Isa's. I hear they do great things, but not a golf course. So this gentleman is the first time I've heard someone other than myself that knows golf that come in here and speak. So that's why I was kind of wondering what he is and what courses he was was in charge of.
I'd like to answer.
Yeah. Okay, what other ones? All right, I just I'm just wondering because you're the first one other, you're the first golfer other than myself and this gentleman here that's come up in front of these people. I've played golf at Warren Valley since 1970. You guys got my email? All right, you see how many rounds of golf I've played at this course? Thousand rounds. I played at Warren Valley. Thousand rounds of golf. I know the golf course, and the first thing it should be is a golf course, not a clubhouse. It's a golf course. If he's ready to go at it, I'd rather him go at the golf course, not the clubhouse. Thank you. I'd like to meet with him later just to talk to him, pick his brain, but I think he has more on his hands than he thinks. Flushing Meadows.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council mayor.
Good evening.
My name is Charlie Saad. I live on Golf Crest in the city of Dearborn. I back up to the 13th hole of the Dearborn Country Club, which if you're a golfer, you know it's a prestigious club. Yes, and when I joined, I'm also a businessman in the city of Dearborn Heights. And whether you're a resident of Dearborn Heights and Dearborn, it's like your left arm and your right arm, we're all one close city. A lot of my friends, associates live in Dearborn Heights. And that's what brought this to my attention. When I get into a business, I talk to somebody. It's like building a house, you want to talk to the professionals. When I get into business, I spoke with the Isa Brothers. Obviously, they're successful. So what brought me here today is I've been talking to them for the last month, probably five weeks about the course, which I probably played maybe 120 times, not 1,000. I I've been talking to the Isa's every morning we meet there. And the reason why I'm here is they're working on it. And me as a golfer, I can put my input in. I'm partially a builder. I can help them put the thing together, but I don't think this thing needs to drag on to next year. I think if they open the west course as soon as possible, then eventually work on the issues on the east course. That'll be a big plus. But also, I'm here in support, and I'm also going to dedicate my time to help the guys out, give them some input, and, you know, get my hands dirty and make that a beautiful golf course again. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Saad.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Okay.
I'm Zalay Abdul-Huk. That doesn't give you any more time. Just 30 seconds for that. Vince Trabkowski, Columbia Street. I would like to know if somebody can answer the question or not, especially if we're going to have to maintain the parking lot, the sidewalk and the surrounding properties of the golf course. How are we going to afford to do that? We're going to get $60,000 a year as proposed in this draft? I think that's a little low. I mean, what's the going rate of commercial property nowadays, Mr. Abdul?
Okay, I'm not going to go into the negotiations.
Yeah, well, I'm saying it's a lot more than that. Okay?
But but keep in mind, with the proposals, 3.4 million too, so it's not just a 60.
I understand that.
Sure.
If the city's having financial trouble, we don't want to be paying out of our pocket. We need to start making some revenue so we can pay our employees what they're worth, especially if you're giving away 20% increases and stuff like that for your staff. Also, isn't Club Caddy a software program? Club Caddy? Consulting and technology. So have you ever gone out there and done the physical work yourself?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay, then just talk through the council chair, please.
All right, so it's a software management company. So do they provide the physical labor and everything to get this thing up and running? Because right now, you're you're going to need farm tractors out there to collect the hay.
Okay, sir, what I'm going to do, what I'm going to do is as soon as Vince is done, I'll give you an opportunity to answer the gentleman's question earlier, who's in the back there, and I'll give you an opportunity to answer Vince's question. So as soon as Vince is done, go ahead, Vince.
All right, that's that's pretty much it. I mean, it's just, yeah, I think these numbers are a little low, and I know you guys aren't ready to sign any contract or anything like that, but I'd like to see a little more on the dollar cents. And also, I would like to see upper proposed drawings of what you're going to do with the improving the clubhouse, the entrances, the something. Because right now, we're shooting in the dark at nothing. And hopes that we're going to get something. I know everybody can go up here and talk about Mr. Isa doing great jobs. That's cool. But let's show something. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. So come on up, sir. I'm going to have you answer Vince's question and the earlier gentleman's question. I'm not sure where he's at, but I was here. There he is. There he is. So if you don't mind answering those two questions, I'll give you a minute and a half. Go ahead.
So there's a lot of work that goes into renovating a golf course, and this is not me personally who's doing this. So Mr. Isa brought me in to help find the right team. He's brought in two superintendents, as I had mentioned when I was up here before, former superintendent at Calderon Golf Course, another superintendent that I can't speak of where he's at because he may leave where his current employer is. Okay, how about now?
Good. A little bit better, yes.
A little bit better? I'm just going to talk loud.
Yeah.
So as I was saying, renovating a golf course is not something I do by myself. It's something I've experienced doing that I've done before successfully, right? And the people that Mr. Isa is hoping to bring in and is already, you know, bringing in include superintendents, PGA professionals, and people other than just me who have experience in the golf industry, right? So this is not a one man job. It's certainly not something that I would be doing by myself. He's asked me to help him put the right team around him to run the golf course. As he's made clear and as he's shown so far, expense isn't an issue with him. I mean, he wants the right people there, so this is a viable golf course. This is not me doing it. This is me working with Mr. Isa to help him put the right team around him to make sure the golf course can be run. Not only, you know, the grounds are in right shape, that's a big part of it, but the golf course also has to support itself, or else it's going to be an ongoing problem for city council, right? I mean, the golf course has, rates have to be priced appropriately. There needs to be analysis done to what items should be carried in the pro shop, where margins are higher. There's a lot that goes into a golf course beyond just the golf course being in good shape, right? And so that's that's what he's helping or he's brought me in to do is to help him build the right team around him to make sure that the golf course is in good shape, but also that on a moving forward basis, it's financially viable.
Thank you very much, sir. Hopefully for the two gentlemen to answer. Okay, I'm going to give you just one last after the question. Go ahead.
The most recently was today. Absolutely. There's about 100 trees that are going to need to be removed. That's right. Yeah, we drove the entire course today. I saw, like I said, we literally drove the entire golf course today.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Council chair, I've got a question for him.
Sure.
Did you say you walked the golf course today?
We drove in a golf cart.
All 36 holes?
We we drove the cart path around every hole. Not every golf course has a cart path, so there were probably some holes that we missed. But we covered as much as we could. We weren't able to drive the entire golf course because some of it, as he mentioned, there were trees down, and there was very long brush.
Now, seeing that you just did that, can can you give us an idea how many of the greens are currently cut?
Well, the greens are dead, so it's not a matter of them being cut. I mean, the greens are not alive right now, right? So the the question of opening the golf course up this year, you're going to need to reseed, you're going to need to start watering, and you're also going to have to hope for some good weather in order to get those greens up and going. Turf grows best in the fall, and it grows best in the spring, right? And so that's the time that the golf, that that grass will grow, and it'll be ready for next year. But if you open that golf course up today, people will be paying on dead greens. Your best solution would be to paint those greens, which some golf courses have done.
So you're saying zero greens are cut?
Zero green, well, the greens are all cut. They're short. They're dead. No grass is growing. It's bent grass, and and there, nothing's growing. Now, also, and somebody did raise a really good comment, if you wait a year, if this, if money isn't going to this golf course to get it going by next year, it's going to become increasingly more expensive every year, more drainage leaks, more, I mean, the pump house. One of the pump house right now has a leak above it that we just noticed that, I mean, it's just anytime it rains, all the electrical is falling right into the pump station. It's just, it's not a good situation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
No, one of the pump stations has a roof of the clubhouse.
Hassan Saad, Dearborn Heights.
Microphone, mic, please.
Hassan Saad, Dearborn Heights.
I think what we may need to do, maybe have the microphones, honestly, and I'm serious, like maybe moved up, because it seems everybody's having a hard time speaking into it. Please, go ahead. There he is. If you don't mind, if you could have maybe the microphones moved up on the podium.
Don't you pick them out? I'm talking about Warren Valley Golf Course. Everybody coming up here saying this thing was a gem. This thing was garbage, and it is garbage. It's going to hurt a lot of people's feelings. It's garbage. I mean, if.
Council chair, his street.
I did.
Yeah, he did say.
John Daly. Yeah, John Daly. You've obviously haven't golfed a real golf course is to know what a really good golf course is. And to keep saying that it was maintained last year, the last day, it's garbage. I mean, that thing should be torn down and rebuilt, and you guys are sitting here fighting on who wants to get it or put out the contracts, not make enough money. How much has the city collected in the past off of it in the past seven years? But how much have they can, how much have they can collected in revenue? Nothing. What was left there? Nothing. Everybody says that they worked there. They worked there. They worked there and played for free and got events for free. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, sir.
Council chair, I'd just like to state a statement that we may have not gotten any revenue. We may have not gotten any revenue. However, it didn't cost the city anything or very little.
Since I'm a radio host, so this is how we fix it. My name is Alfa Famaad, and I live in Syracuse, Dearborn, Michigan. I've been watching this issue since a while, and we are very good in arguing and fight, but we are not sitting down and trying to find solutions. We, we, I mean, not me, I live in Dearborn. Many of you from Dearborn Heights, you guys elected them. You trusted them. So if they're sitting on this bench, do you know what's the best for the city? I've been watching the businesses. They're coming to Dearborn Heights to invest. Citizens are investing also in buying properties. Isa's Brothers, I've been watching them since over 10 years. They have clean record, excellent record in businesses. They never failed. And I don't think there's a man will put that million, a couple million dollars just to dump it in the garbage. They know what they're doing. Just give them time, chance. We, if if you need change, you need to give people a chance to prove. So please, let's work together and stop this argument. And I believe Bill Bazey, he's doing a great job. The council people are doing a great job. We need to sit down and just ask questions, have a coffee with Mr. Isa, have a coffee with them, and I'm sure we're going to find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And that that comes from someone in radio. Our engineer right now is analyzing this like. Okay, anybody else?
Council chair.
We have to, yes.
Okay, I, I, okay, I just got a quick statement to make about the the feral cat.
Councilman, if you don't mind, let's keep that.
A lot of people are going to be leaving before we get to that on agenda.
Well, I know, but we're going to get to the agenda. We'll go ahead and be able to discuss it unless you're asking a particular person's question. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm just going to speak on the feral cat issue. If you stop feeding the cats, they're not going to go away. I I don't know what you people are thinking. The cats are still going to be here. They're very good for the rodent problem. I'm a member of a TNR group. I've had many people reach out to me in Dearborn Heights to trap people that feed in their yards, in the backyards. Don't leave food up there all day. They have certain times they feed the cats. The cats come because they know their routines. When the cats leave, they pick the food up. The cats are not going to go away just because you stopped feeding them. Most of those cats are referred to as community cats. They're not feral. There's a big difference. Community cats are cats that are out, that people have abandoned, that people have moved away and just let out. When we do trap, neuter, and return, we take these cats and we fix them. We are trying to definitely control the cat population. That's what our job is, trap, neuter, and return. We trap these cats, we get them fixed so they don't have more kittens, and we return them to their homes. Like I said, the cat problem is not going to go away just because you think you can stop feeding the cats. I've trapped many cats here in Dearborn Heights. I've had people reach out to me for this problem, and it's helped, and it's helped a lot. Cats have just as much reason to be here as anybody else does, including the human beings. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, no other members in the audience, it looks like. Is that correct? Nobody else? Okay, there was somebody on Zoom earlier, Amber. Do you still have something to say? Were you all sat? Amber?
Boys? One last time. Okay.
Council chair, 30. 30 seconds, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to let everyone know that the city of Dearborn Heights is currently involved in the trap, neuter, and release program. If a cat is, we get a complaint about a feral cat, it's trapped, if we get him trapped, he's sent out to be neutered, and they're returned to the original spot where they were captured. So I think the issue here is the feeding. And I'm going to, I'm going to recommend that we table this to a study session when we come to it.
We'll, we'll, we'll get there. Okay, thank you very much. So seeing nobody else on Zoom and nobody else in the audience, we're going to go ahead and go to the next section of the council meeting. Oh, okay, now Amber's on. Okay, go ahead, Amber.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Amber O'Shea, I live on Gertrude Street. I am a member of Community Cats United. I think that most people that have spoken tonight are probably have said exactly what I would like to say. But I hope that council considers funding and continuing participating in the TNR program. Is also don't enforce the feeding ban. I hope you guys come up with a solution. But I think, as others have said, all of us animal lovers are willing to unite and help with the solution as well.
Are we all sat, ma'am? Okay, thank you very much, Amber. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, I'm not sure, did we get the the street name and the city? I don't think so, yeah. Amber, can you please repeat your street name and city? I'm sorry? I'm sorry? You got it, okay, Gertrude and Dearborn Heights. Thank you very much, Amber, appreciate it. All right. Next up, we're going to go ahead and do fund transfers and current claims. Councilman Bedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the current claims 6-1 through 6-100 as submitted.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun, supported by Councilman Ahmad, is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please state aye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item is item 7A, Parks and Recreation Director Laurence L., bid award.
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid of the re-surfacing of Central Park Parking Lot to L.'s Asphalt Paving Co., Inc. In the amount of $112,567. Sorry. And authorize the comptroller and the, and the comptroller's office to return all bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the necessary warrants and the treasury to issue payment from the Parks and Recreation Capital Outlay Account 101-691-981.000 as outlined in 7A.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun, supported by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
I had a question, um, yeah, just one sec, Councilman. I had a question, I'm not sure if the Recreation Parks Director, or maybe Aladeeb is going to answer this one, but just a question for clarification. Why is it that we're not going, we're only going with two inches, not four inches on that asphalt? Is that going to be enough? Because traditionally, on a lot of asphalt jobs, they like to go with four inches. I'm just trying to get a clarification. Yeah, we turned it around.
I know. So two layers, actually two. There's a base and a top.
Do you have a total of four inches?
So there's a base and a top, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilman Wensel, go ahead.
Director, can you come back up here for a second? Because I had, uh, both of you in a second here. Now, you, is this a, uh, is, is this, is this going to be a stripping or a mil, is it going to be milled?
Yes.
It's going to be milled, okay. Completely down to what?
So it's milled, it's, it's uneven currently, the, the pavement's uneven, so you may, in some spots, you probably end up with the stone base.
Okay.
In some spots, you won't, it's uneven.
Okay, and I'm sure you're involved with this, obviously.
Yes.
Uh, and I was, I was called by a couple people, and they wanted me to ask Director Laurence L. why, uh, just ask them because I was asked to ask you, um, why isn't any of this money being spent on the tennis courts at Richard A. Young Center?
Because the, um, tennis courts take a lot more money, number one. I mean, it's, the last price we had for the tennis courts was almost $300,000, and we definitely don't have the funds for that right now. And this parking lot actually has not been done since I've been there, so it's in really bad shape. It's a pretty high priority, too.
Is this coming out of your budgeted?
Yes, it was budgeted in this current budget.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Any other discussions in regards to this particular item, item 7A? Okay, no other discussions, we're going to go ahead and take that to a vote. Uh, motion in regards to Parks and Recreation Director Laurence L. All in favor, please state aye. 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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 7B, Parks and Recreation Director Laurence L., bid award.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights, please bear with me, I'm having a hard time reading here with my eyesight. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for Star Trek SRBX 93150 Mini O recumbent bike or equal to all Pro Fitness, things in the amount of $2,362.50. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the necessary warrants and the treasury to issue payment from Richard A. Young Capital Outlay 101-692-981.000 as outlined in 7B.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Constan, is there any discussion on that? Just quickly, thank you for the director for continuing work and bringing in additional new equipment for the members, so thank you. Any other discussions on that? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take this to a vote. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Constan, all in favor, please state aye. 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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 8A, Dearborn Heights Public Employees Association Agreement.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agreement with the Dearborn Heights Public Employees Association and authorized the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in 8-8.
Support.
Okay. Motion made by, yeah, that's what I thought, okay. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer, is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
Thank you so much, Council Chair, and I, you know, I, I, I hear the young gals that spoke today and the families at home, and, you know, sometimes we're put in tough decisions. I know that this is a one-year. Okay. I know that, you know, sometimes we're put in tough decisions to make, uh, you know, decisions like this, and I know that both parties have come to an agreement. You know, and, and I just want to say that I know this is happening for one year. Uh, I, you know, we went through a very extensive budget. I think this administration understands where you guys are coming from, and I can tell you right now that this council definitely understands where this, where you guys are coming from. We thank you guys for this agreement, and in one year, we're going to continue to hear the voices of both the administration and the TPOAM. And with that, Council Chair, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Any other?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Well, this, this contract is, is, it's like a farce, I guess you could say. It wasn't negotiated by the city, it was negotiated through a mediator because the city and the union were unable to come up to a conclusion over, in, over a year. And to take credit for it, I wouldn't take credit for this contract from anyone. And the union was almost forced to sign this because they, they don't have, uh, retroactive pay, which me, whichever, just about every other union does. When a contract expires and it takes a year to get a new contract, they get back pay for that whole year. This union does not get that. So for every day that they don't have a contract, they're losing money. So this 1% could have been offered to them a year ago, and they lost 1% for a whole year. So it's not, it's not something that they accepted, they, they had to take this because it's been going on, and if they turned it down, it would have been another prolonged, you know, I'm just assuming, it'd be another prolonged period where they didn't get anything. And they're getting a $2,000 signing bonus, and this was mentioned. And after taxes, that's less than $1,400. And 1% raise is roughly $400 a year. I mean, that's their raise. Cost of living is three or four times, at least three or four times that much. They're losing out, they didn't win anything. They lost again. And like on the other unions, they don't have binding arbitration. Every other union, most of them have binding arbitration, where an arbitrator comes in, makes a decision, and that's final, that's the decision. Where the mediator comes in, they, they suggest something, and the city doesn't have to take that, they can say, no, we don't want that. So they, they, they're in a lose-lose situation all, all the way down, and that's what they negotiated or have been offered in the past. And it's sad that this particular union is so far below all the other unions as far as their, their benefits and everything. Sure, they, they get great benefits, pension, but every employee, full-time employee in Dearborn Heights gets the same benefits. Don't let anybody fool you when they say, oh, they're only, they make $15 an hour, but they get great benefits. So does everyone else. So don't, that's not even an issue. And everybody up here, I'm assuming everyone, one of us up here said in the past that this, these union members deserve a raise. And I, I'm sure everyone said that. And we talked about this about six months ago, when the proposed raises for the non-union employees came across for us for approval. And we said, almost all of us, okay, you know, this, it's a lot, it's a big raise for everyone, but we're going to say yes if we get this union contract settled fairly. And that didn't happen at all. So I'm asking, I'm voting no on this. I'm asking all of you to put your money where your mouth is. You, you promised the union people that you would do something if the administration got these big raises for their non-union people, that you would do something, and no one's done anything, and hardly anyone has spoken up except for me. That's a fact, and I'm, I'm telling you guys, put your money where your mouth is today and vote no on this contract. Thank you.
Tom, I got a question for you. Council Chair. I got, I just got a question for Tom, and, and again, I'm not doing this to be smart, I'm really, I'm just asking the question. You told me right now that the only reason why the, this was voted upon amongst the two parties was because that they don't get retroactive pay, and so that they'd be losing money constantly. So voting no on this and turning this down, would they continue to lose money?
Yeah, but they could get a better offer.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm listening to the young girl who's...
Okay, if, if you don't mind, the audience, please.
Now, I mean, what's, what's $400 a year, Mo? It's nothing.
I absolutely agree.
I would, I, I don't know what I'd do if I was in their shoes. I don't want to say right now.
Thank you. So, so I can, I can speak for myself. Personally, I'm not crazy about the 1% raise, and I've said it many, many times, I feel that they should be paid more, but at the end of the day, we do got to respect the fact that the unions and administration have been going back and forth, back and forth, I think, um, either a year or over a year now. I'm not crazy about this contract, but at the same time, keep in mind, this is, and, and I think it's, it's to the benefit of most people involved, it's only a one-year contract. So therefore, negotiations can start, hopefully effective immediately or as soon as possible, work on next year's contract, and just like in sports.
It's a two-year contract. Last year and this coming year. They already lost a year.
Yeah. One-year contract. So I'm hoping, and again, we had a closed session on this, and of, of course, a lot of discussions happened during that closed session, which we can't get into, but I'm, and, and all of us discussed and gave our opinions, so councilmen with due respect, I don't like it when you say nobody's given their opinion, only myself.
No, I said supporting the union.
I, I know, but we also have all mentioned that we'd like to have each and every one of them get paid fairly. I'm for it, and, and I'm just speaking on behalf of myself. But nevertheless, this is the final contract that's been approved by the union and by the administration, and at this particular point, we have two options. We can turn it down as council members, and if we do, of course, it goes back to negotiating table, and who knows how long that will take. We do know it took one year for the first con, for this contract, so I'm not sure if that's in the best interest of the members either. Again, 1%, personally, I'm not satisfied with it, but that's what we have in front of us to vote on, so I just wanted to clarify that. Any other council members have any comments?
Council Chair, I also would just like to make a quick correction here. At least I'm going to speak for myself, uh, Tom, I've definitely been defending our, our union employees. I come, grew up in a union household, a union family, and, uh, you know, I, I respect you, Tom, and, and making the stance that you make, but I also have to disagree that, uh, I also have stood up, and I'd like to believe almost every single person on here also stood up. I can tell you, to my recollection, that I believe, uh, the council pro tem, the council chair, and almost every single person here while we were at Riverside spoke up and defended, uh, the union when they showed up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not going to get into that.
Any other comments from council members? All right. Hearing none, we're going to go ahead and, and take this to a vote. Motion on 8A, Dearborn Heights Public Employees Association DHPEA/TPOAM agreement. All in favor, please state aye. 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 Those opposed?
No.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can please take roll call.
Dave Abdallah?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Mo Bedun?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Constan?
Yes.
Ray Muscat?
Yes.
And Tom Wensel?
No.
Uh, motion carried.
Okay, motion carried, thank you very much, appreciate it. Next up is item 9A, City Engineer Dib, Lower Rouge CSO Design Area L-42 Agreement.
Council Chair.
Uh, Councilman Constan, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agreement for the Lower Rouge CSO L-42 sewer program as executed with Brian Alesski and Pemar Enterprises, Inc. In addition, authorize Mayor Bazey and Clerk Lynn Senia to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Furthermore, we rescind Council Motion 22-251 to the extent that it conflicts with this motion as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constan, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer, is there any discussions on that? Councilman Muscat.
Just for, to refresh my memory, what is the motion that you want eliminated? What was that?
So, so the prior motion, um, in our last, um, city council approval, um, was, um, sent to the contractor for signature, and the contractor, uh, made a change. He assigned, um, a project manager. So that made the, uh, the, the contract now, um, invalid. It's not the same contract you guys approved.
That whole big package.
No, no, it's the legal part. The technical part, that big package, the one that you killed two trees on, um, that one, the technical part is the same. It's the legal part of the contract.
Shouldn't we outline that in here, the legal portion?
Per legally, uh, uh, the, just like in, in traditional contracts, I spoke with Mr. Dib. It's the same contract that we approved as a council body, the same project, same everything, just one additional person that's going to be involved in the proj, project management, and because of that, according to Dib, obviously, we have to rescind the old one and bring it back to the council for approval, move forward.
I think we should, if I may, note, we should note that in, in the motion that it's the legal portion and not the works.
It's actually because the contracts are not the same as Mr. Dib said. The difference here is that there's a variance had to do with an additional name that was included in terms of the person who had supervised things for the contractor, and because there's a variance between the two, it seemed that this would be the easier way to address this than to end up saying, we approve it, and then change things, just more cleaner, just to say, here's the agreement, this is a good agreement, approve it.
I understand that.
Rescind the prior one, which approved a slightly different agreement.
For the record, I just wanted to put in, and for the legal portion, that's what's being changed, not the scope of the work or who's doing that work. Correct?
That, that, that's correct, but I mean, basically, they're two different, they're two different agreements, barely, and all you have to do is compare the two.
But, but the whole, but that was on the whole motion. It, you want to strike the whole motion, which included that contract.
Yes. No, 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 because you're approving the exact same contract, you're just not, you're, you're rescinding the prior one because there's a slight difference between the two contracts.
I wanted on the record to state that.
Okay. The contracts are different. I mean, this does the effect.
That it's the same contract except for the legal part with the, with the addition of the name. That's all. And just for, for the record, because I don't want somebody coming back, well, oh, yeah, you rescinded that contract, and we got another contract. Okay? Seen that?
So, Corfashion Counselor, just for, um, our councilman's peace of mind, again, I spoke with Mr. Dib, I know that's what he said, and he just said it again publicly, but just for the councilman's peace of mind, the only change is the name on the project manager, is that correct?
Yes, the addition of the, the project manager name under 5, 4A.
That's it. All I want is on the... And the rest of the contract is the same, correct?
Yeah, and you, if, if you want to change the motion, just, uh, put in the motion and rescinded, uh, or, or you could just say approved, this was, this change is necessary for the reasons stated during the meeting on June 28th, 2022.
Okay. Do you feel?
So moved. Robert says so moved.
So, motion, motion 9A has been amended by Councilman Muscat.
Nope.
I'm sorry, Councilman, uh, Constan, and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. You comfortable with that, Councilwoman? Okay, so any other discussion items on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye. 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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9B, Comptroller King Budget Amendments to the 2021-2022 Budget.
Anybody?
Anybody?
Council Chair.
Councilman Constan.
That the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the comptroller to amend the fiscal year 2021 and 2022 General Fund 101 Operating Budget for increases to various general fund revenue line items by $725,319 net and decrease the various expenditure appropriation line items by $2,999,516 net. In addition, amend the fiscal year 2021-2022 Confiscated Monies Fund, uh, 265 Operating Budget for increases to various revenue line items by $296,000 and decrease various expenditure appropriation line items by $200,000 as outlined in 9B.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constan, supported by Councilman Bedun, is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, uh, Muscat.
I've got some issues with this, and I, and I, I come across them, and, uh, is our comptroller here? There she is.
Come on up, please.
And I think there's more than what I spoke, uh, prodded here, but, uh, the first one is building permits, 101-004-77.000.
Which page is that on?
This is the second page, where it breaks down what...
I see it.
Okay. I'm looking at the three numbers here, and I'm, the 50,000 deficit looks to me as it's a deficit 98,303. That's one. The next one.
Councilman, if you could do my favor, let's have her answer that one first, because I, there's gonna be a lot of numbers thrown around, it's gonna get confusing. Go ahead, Director.
Hi, um, first of all, this budget amendment was done by Plant Moran, Brian, and I believe he is on Zoom right now. He was going to be here, unfortunately, he has COVID. So he can explain this more than I can, since it was last year's a budget.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Uh, Brian, hope you feel better, but go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, I wish I could be there in person, I, I wish I could leave my house.
Sure.
Um, so, uh, Councilman Muscat, uh, it's not, the third column is not the difference between the two columns. It's the, uh, amount of the amendment.
Wait, you, you got cut off. Brian, can you start again? Um, if I can interrupt for a sec before you start again, Mr. Dib, we gotta do something about this internet thing. This is, this is not working.
This is a brand-new room here.
Yeah, uh, Brian, I know there's no connection, just one second. All right, now it says it's stable, so let's try this again. Start from the beginning again, please, sorry. And I know with COVID, you're not crazy about talking too much, but we have no choice, sorry.
Oh, sure, I understand, so, um, the, the amendment in total, uh, so this is really a, this is a cleanup, end-of-the-year adjustment. So, uh, shouldn't come as any surprise with all of the, uh, transitions and turnover in the comptroller's office, uh, that proper amendments were not made all throughout the year. I, I know some had been brought to you, but, uh, not as many as there should have been. So this is, this is a very comprehensive adjustment, and we literally, uh, both myself and Mr. Sabuda, uh, had gone through the entire, uh, general ledger, line by line, and suggested, uh, what we think, what we think are the right amendments, uh, most of them are estimates, uh, because we're still in the process of helping the city get caught up on their accounting. So, um, if there are any, uh, if any of these line items have a, uh, an amount in the amendment column that, uh, doesn't. Uh, it will make sense by the time everything is caught up. Um, the adjustment ma- is not the difference, it's what we are proposing as the amendment. Or the, the change that we want to, to have made.
So, sh- should not we had a fourth column here showing that?
Well, if, we could have, I'm, I just updated what Mr. Sabuda had started. Um, if we're going to be doing this long-term, we can't, or doing it with Comptroller King, we can put it in whatever format you like.
Because, you know, I, I'm getting this format here, and as always, I add and subtract the numbers across. It's usually while we do the budget, and I'm coming up with different numbers, and I don't know what I'm approving and what I'm not approving. I, I don't, I don't understand how someone wants to approve this when I don't have a number to approve.
Well, you, you do, the third column should foot, if you, if you were to add it up, it should foot. Those are the adjustments that are, are being suggested by us, uh, to each individual line item. So in total, your general fund revenues will... Total net, your expenses of the general fund will de- decrease by, uh, just under $3 million. $2,999,516.
I understand that, but, but again, I, I, I'm just gonna pick building permits, where it's $920,000 for the current budget, the amended budget says $821,697.50, and then in parentheses, it's a, a decrease of $50,000. I don't know where that $50,000 is coming from, when it's clearly, you know, a lot larger than that, so what am I voting on? Am I voting on it's going down 50,000, or it's going down 100,000?
You're voting on the third column.
So how could the amended budget then be larger than what the third column says?
If, if there's one or two lines that has a formula error, I, I apologize, but the grand total will, it is fine, or.
So, so, uh, Brian.
Hundreds of lines here being adjusted.
So Brian, I, 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 I'm gonna give other council members an opportunity to talk, but I know I spoke with a couple of council members. A lot of these numbers, honestly, for myself, either did not make sense. When you add them or subtract them up, they just, they just don't honestly add up. So, if, uh, there, and there was a lot, I mean, I have a lot of them that had, uh, checked off, which don't make sense. So I'm just wondering with our counselor, council members, if maybe we do either a study session on this, or, or table it until it's cleaned up, because there was, there was a lot that I personally had questions on.
There's more than just one mistake, Council.
Yeah.
Lot of lines, yeah, 100,000.
Yeah.
Turning back to. It, it would be fine if you were to table it, um, however, the end of your fiscal year is this week.
Yeah.
So if you were to approve this after the end of the fiscal year, then you will be violating the, uh, Budget Act. Uh, amendments must happen within the same fiscal year. So once, once July 1st hits, you can't amend back to June 30th.
Okay, Councilman, go ahead, and then we'll go to Chief of Staff.
You, you know, it just, as I went through it, and I, and I, you know, I also had some of these conversations here, um, we're, we're gonna be voting on something that has errors on there, I mean, I don't... I don't know, I'm.
Okay, uh, like, Chief of Staff?
Hi, uh, so, Mariana Hernandez, Chief of Staff, City of, of Dearborn Heights. Um, so I think that one of the things that you've touched upon is the confusion between what a budget amendment is and a budget to actual is. So what you're trying to see is what, where are we on our current expenses? We're not showing that in this report, would be happy to share it with you, but that's how we come up with those numbers on the, on the right hand, right side of the column, is because we're looking at what the current budget is, which you've recently seen one about a month ago during the budget approval. So you have an idea of where we are currently, and the increases and decreases presented here will make us balance out our budget. So that's what amendments do, they balance out the budget so that we're not over, uh, or under on many of our items. So that's why those differences are there. They're not mistakes, they're based on actual expenses or revenues that we've received throughout the year. And as, as Brian mentioned, like, we look at that line by line, and it starts during the budget, um, creation process. So we already kind of had an idea, and if you look at your budget packages that we gave you, it did said what our expected, ex- expected expenses were going to be, and what our expected revenues were going to be. This is what matches to those expectations.
So which, so the, so the, column three is the amount of money we're going to approve from the second column, which is the amended budget?
No, so again, you're only increasing or decreasing things in every line item. So it's not like you're moving it from one line to another.
I'm sorry, the numbers aren't adding up.
So again, there's one page that's all of your revenues. All of your revenues are moving up or down in every single one of those line items. And then you have your expenses, and all of those are moving up or down in one of those accounts. That's how they match, so you have to understand the accounting of what a revenue account and what an expense account is. But they're not within one general ledger line, because you have your revenue portion of the budget and your expense portion of your budget. That's what we're matching.
This, you know, we were going real good when we were going through the budget season, and I really understood it a lot. We went across the li- the, 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 the columns, we added, we subtracted, we came up with a number. I'm doing the same thing here, and the numbers aren't the same. So now we're going back and we're saying this and that, but, uh, I, I, I just.
So, again, imagine you were looking at your package, there was a tab that was your revenues. You weren't comparing your revenues to your expenses. They were in separate tabs altogether. So you never compare revenues to expenses.
I think they should make this, this body, uh, be, uh, all CPA's so they can argue this, because this is ridiculous. I mean, I've just by, I picked this piece of paper up, and the minute my eyes hit it, I said, "This ain't right." I mean, this is fourth-grade math, third-grade math, okay? And I saw these numbers, and I, "That can't be right," and some, some are really, uh, like, uh, state share revenues. I, I'm looking, it should be a negative instead of a positive, uh.
I understand that it can be confusing, however, again, we've spent a lot of money hiring contractor services to help us clean up this process. And this is what they're recommending at the moment.
But I, I think we should have had a fourth column in there, I think we should have had a fourth column in there explaining what, what it is.
Okay, Councilman, go ahead. Mariana, come on up.
This needs to be passed within this fiscal year. So this format, maybe the councilman doesn't find it.
It's the exact same format we've used for every single budget amendment, it's just this time it's a lot more. But if we were to break it apart one by one, it's exactly what you've been approving all year long.
Okay, so, so in layman's terms, what is the exact ultimate purpose of this? So, because, in other words, let's just use a hypothetical here. Let's say we had, um, additional expenses, like in this case, we got $3 million something. At the end of the year, at the end of the fiscal year, then it can make it look like we, we were, were short on our budget. What is the ultimate purpose of this, just to clar- for clarification for the council members?
Brian will be able to answer that better for us, but ultimately, we're getting ready to go into the audit. If you have so many accounts that are unbalanced, it's going to be a lot of, um, audit signs that are being pulled up and looked into, when it could be easier if we fix it before the fiscal year ends.
Okay, so let me have Brian, wait, Brian's got his name, go ahead.
But I do understand that we take money from one account, and we move it to another account, so we can balance each one of those accounts, and I understand that part, but I didn't understand how they're coming up with the math and doing it. Okay, and, and that's it, and, and I think it was a legitimate question. Um, I understand the budget amendments, you take one, take, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, okay? Uh, let's just face it, that's just the way it works. And, uh, I just think the numbers should have been a little more clearer to us, that's all.
Thank you, Brian, go ahead.
Yes, so I, I figured out what the problem is, I do apologize.
Wait, hold on.
The first.
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on, whatever you said didn't come through, because I, I apologize, so you apologize, now go ahead.
The, the error is not in the numbers, it's in the column heading. The first column is, uh, is correctly labeled, "Current Budget." The second column is incorrectly labeled. The second column is the current balance as of two weeks ago. The third column is the suggested amendment. So the only thing that's wrong is that one column header. Now, you're not going to be able to do the math from left to right, it's not supposed to be one minus the other. For some of them, they do work. Why? Because we don't expect that number to change. And so we are, for those, it does work, because we're, our adjustment is exactly the difference. For the ones that don't, either because the number's going to go up more, and so we're, we're adding a larger amount to it, or for the ones that are subtractions, we're just guessing how much the, uh, current budget was overestimating.
So I'm not crazy.
You're, you're absolutely not crazy, but it was, there was never an intention for it to, to do math from left to right.
Council Chair. Go ahead, Council. Uh, Brian, I, I wanna, I just wanna apologize, Brian, thanks for catching that, actually. Something so small.
Mariana, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, so Brian, just for another clarification, what is the ultimate, in layman's terms, purpose of this?
The purpose of this is to get your final amended budget close to what the actual numbers are going to be. Not so much for revenue, it's okay if we're wrong on revenue. But for expenses, if you are budgeting too little, and you spend over that amount, it's a violation of the Budget Act, it's illegal. Now, that, that's the simplest way, but if you'll notice, you're, on the expenditure side, we're reducing it by $3 million. And it, it's, I, I hate to tell you, but it's not because you made a bunch of great decisions and didn't spend $3 million, it's because the budget wasn't adopted or wasn't prepared well a year-plus ago. And so you were adopting some faulty numbers, and so really what this is doing is just cleaning up the budget, so that it, it is in the ballpark of reasonable.
Okay, and at the end of the day, in, in layman's terms, again, we did not spend over the budget, we spent under the budget. Revenues went up a little bit, but the expenses were a lot less than what was originally projected. Is that correct?
Correct, that is correct.
Thank you, Councilman Wensel.
No, it wasn't me.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was you, Councilman Amad.
Brian, can you explain, uh, in, uh, Part B, General Fund, the second line, 101, 207,16000? Is that hospital insurance or something, or? It says $4 million, then, um, the current balance is 23, then the amendment is $4 million?
Correct, so one of the things that we are going to fix before we are done is the way that the city uses this Department 200 for general government.
Mm-hmm.
So as bills are being paid, a lot of expenses just get dumped into this department. And then at the end of the year, they're reallocated out to the various departments. So in this case, for hospital insurance, you were going to pay $4 million, and, but it, it's, and I'm making this, this part up, but it's $2 million for police, and $1 million for fire, and $500,000 for DPW. And by the end of the year, we'll spread them out to the right departments. But what two comptrollers ago did when he was creating the budget was, not only was he putting an amount in the police department, in the fire department, in the DPW, he also put an amount in Department 200. So one of the reasons why we're having to cut total budgeted expenses by $3 million is because there were some expenses that were budgeted for twice. And so this amendment is fixing that, and having an expense only budgeted for once.
So is that the same thing that works for lines, uh, for lines, uh, 101, 207,2001?
Uh, a little bit different, uh, that one is your police and fire retiree expenses that are paid with the Public Act 345 millage. So that one, and this is another, this is a funny thing that, that past comptrollers have done, those expenses do stay in this department.
Okay.
Um, but the, uh, the estimate of how much was going to have to be paid was too high by about half a million dollars.
So we're paying half a million dollars?
You're gonna pay about $4 million by the time you're done, but the budget is 4.4.
And Brian, every one of these expenses were approved by the city council, is that correct?
That's correct.
No, I'm talking about the final expenses that we have on these documents here.
Well, they, they're not final.
We had a higher amount approved, it's less, but every one of these has been allocated for by the city council, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, Council Chair.
Councilman.
I'm just wondering, what's, what's a penalty, or if we violate, uh, if we don't, we don't vote on this today?
Um, quite honestly, it's a slap on the wrist in your audit. It, it's, no one's gonna go to budget jail, this is not the end of the world by any means if you go over on anything, but there would be a comment in the audit that you spent in excess of your budget.
In the audit by Plant Moran, correct?
Well, Plant Moran will not be auditing you this year, because we're doing the internal account.
Right, correct, right, conflict of interest, correct. Okay. Any other council members have any comments on this? I, I, I can tell you, I, I'll just speak for myself, personally, I feel more comfortable, I'd rather take a slap on the wrist, I'd rather do a city council study session on this, so we could go through this a little bit more detail.
Council, at least if they can just fix it, then we can look at it better.
Well, the only fix that they have is, uh, at this point, is what they're gonna be naming it.
If, if, if it's not passed tonight because you're not comfortable with it, that's fine, totally okay, that's your decision. But I wouldn't spend a minute of time thinking about this after June 30th, because it, it's, it's done, it's over with. We'll be, we'll be in the next fiscal year with the next budget that you approved a few weeks ago. So i- if you're not comfortable with it, vote against this amendment, that's fine. There will just be some large variances in the budget actual in the audit. But please do not, you have bigger fish to fry next week, next month. Don't spend any more time on this amendment after today.
Okay. I'd like to ask our Corporation Counsel, I know it's not your specialty area, but just get your opinion on this. Because I'm going to tell you for myself, I'm just not comfortable, there's just way too many numbers here for me to just approve.
Well, I think it's important, before I get yelled at by Rachel, I think it's important to make sure that we are in compliance with the particular law that he's referring to. And if the council has a greater concern with respect to this, to set up a study session. I mean, even though he's saying, you know, you should make sure that you feel that everything that's been represented is indeed correct and that you understand it for future reference.
Okay. Counselor Chair, if I may add, you know, I brought this up because I was looking at the headers. And if the header was incorrect, then that's why I brought this up. But if the heading, the headline was correct, then there was no need for me to even comment on it because I understand how the amendments work. And what we're basically doing is, again, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul from one account. It's still wooden nickels moving it from one to another. So I think wasting more time in, you know, having a study session isn't going to change the numbers at all.
Counselor Chair.
Because we've done this before.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Can we amend the motion to just change a header?
Yeah. The one that made the motion was Councilman Constan.
Yeah, and to amend the heading on page two of the memorandum to read the current balance instead of amended budget. And again, I think we can pass it, and then if we have corrections or people want more information afterwards, but if we don't pass it now, it doesn't do us any good. The headline is what it is, and we're doing this to balance at year-end. So our budget as we passed is the same as the budget is what we spent and took in.
It makes sense now of how he fixed the column because it makes all the sense in the world now.
Counselor Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
I agree, I think this is something where should I be taking slaps on? I think we should just go ahead and make this vote. Again, we've made this, we've already all voted on this. These amendments have already been voted by everybody on council here. The numbers just didn't add up because the columns were mistaken. Now that he went ahead and fixed these columns, I mean, we can have questions about the amendment, but we've had, we went through this already. When I looked at it, I was, first I said, okay, I remember some of the stuff that we voted on, but the numbers didn't add up. Now that he, now that he explained to me, which I should have caught, I mean, that would have been just critical thinking 101. But we didn't catch that. So I mean, I understand where things go on here, but I think we have a bigger fish to fry and we got to continue to move forward. I think in the past, we've constantly had amendment, you know, budget amendments, we were late last year, and that's why we were able to bring on the professionals to do their job. At the end of the day, like you said, none of us here are CPAs. And I know you want to be, you know, just, you know, we all want to step on eggshells, but I don't think anything here isn't something we already voted on. That's all, Counselor Chair, I mean, I would like to support this in all.
Director Hassan Jamal, you want to give us a, I see you have your hand raised, go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's a matter of compliance with the charter provision more than anything else, and you don't want to be in violation of your own charter. You cannot end at any time spending more than what you budgeted for every line item. So all what this amendment do for you is adjusting those line item expectation that they are not going to be in violation by the end of this month, which is a couple of days from today. That's all. You know, the headings were missing, confused. Thanks for Brian. The city is in good hands that we have CPAs taking care of CPA business. The explanation by Brian should be sufficient for you. It's a representation of a Plant Moran, which is one of the best firm out there. I encourage you to approve this and move on with very simple adjustment to the heading according to what CPA Brian explained in simple layman language, like you asked Chairman Abdallah. It is a necessary adjustment to be in compliance with the Charter of the City of Dearborn Heights, How to Budget Accounting. It is in Section 8.9. And I encourage you again to go ahead and approve it.
Okay, thank you very much, Director. So we're going to go ahead and either, at this point, the motion is to go ahead and approve it or disapprove it unless somebody wants to take it to a study session. So with no other comments, we're going to go ahead and take this to a vote. Motion made by Councilman Constan with an amendment to that motion, correct?
Correct.
And seconded by Councilman Badun, you approved the amendment also?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. So, Madam Clerk, if you don't mind, roll call.
Okay. Dave Abdallah?
No.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Moe Badun?
Yes.
Nancy Brier?
Yes.
Robert Constan?
Yes.
Ray Muscat?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, motion carried, thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Next up is from our Controller Cindy King, Treasurer Hicks Clayton, and Chief of Staff Hernandez, Payment Procedures. Item 9C.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
This is a long one, so. I move that Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the mayor to pay necessary expenses without prior authorization of the City Council pursuant to City Charter Section 8.9 up to previously authorized budget amounts in the following categories and subject to the following. Payments may be made for employee wages, salaries, benefits, contributions, and contractually mandated items. B, payments may be made for utilities and insurance where the City Council has previously authorized the city's contractual relationship with the provider. C, payments may be made for the purchase of material, goods, supplies, and other things or things for a cost not to exceed $5,000. The total amount of these payments made between the successive regular meetings of the City Council shall not exceed $3 million or such other amount the City Council may from time to time establish. Additionally, the mayor on special situations exceeds $5,000 limit as the mayor receives City Council approval and it is presented by the council by the following City Council meeting. Moreover, allow the mayor to authorize a comptroller to adjust the GL expenditure budget amounts within the same department without approval from council as long as the department's total budget is not exceeded. In line with the City Charter and State Treasury budgetary guidance, further Corporation Counsel Miyake is directed to prepare one or more appropriate ordinances, resolution, and/or policies to formalize and improve the city's payment procedures as outlined in 9C.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Constan, is there any discussion on that?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Am I remembering wrong, didn't we change under C, sub C, wasn't it two million? Didn't we agree on two million?
No, we agreed on three. As I recall with the study session last week.
You said we would change it based on the City Council.
Counselor Chair.
Go ahead.
Just a difference between, so the 5,000 basically for just purchase of materials and goods, so the $3 million is for the other stuff like utilities and wages and basically includes A and B?
If I, Councilman, the way I had drafted this, it's kind of laid out differently than the way I had drafted it. I think that probably if that's what your intention is, it should be clarified because what ended up happening is you see where C is. Right now, it says the total amount of these payments, it's included in the same paragraph. That's not the way I had ended up organizing it. So it makes it ambiguous in this situation. So it probably should be a period after the $5,000 and then a new paragraph, the total amount of these payments under A in parentheses, B in parentheses, and C in parentheses, made between any successive regular meetings of the council shall not exceed $3 million or such other amounts as the city council may from time to time establish. Then additionally should be a new paragraph.
I move to change that to the way the Corporation Counsel mentioned.
Okay, and myself and Councilman Ahmad were having that discussion earlier today. So I do, it's the same thing that we said, it's not that clear.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the things I noted is that the paragraphing changed and the intent was that for A, B, and C altogether, we're not supposed to exceed $3 million. At least that's my understanding.
Correct.
Of what the council.
Correct.
Wanted to do, and right now, by virtue of the way it's laid out, it's ambiguous. It looks like it could be just C, or it could be A, B, and C. So frankly, it should be paragraphed out a little differently so that the total amount goes to a new paragraph so it's clear and include the references to A, B, and C. I put it, capital A in parentheses, comma, capital B in parentheses, comma, and capital C in parentheses, and then the rest of it laid out there.
And just for clarification, Corporation Counsel, if we authorize it based on what you're just saying right now, is that enough? Or do you think it's better to have this, because this is not an emergency, to have this come back at a next regular council meeting?
I mean, I could, I could end up making those changes. The only thing I'd have questions about is the additionally paragraph and the moreover paragraph, which are not part of my original, my original.
Right, but you said you would separate that.
Yeah, I would separate them out, I just, they're not my language.
Correct.
They're, and the point is, is that to a certain degree, they could be much improved.
Sure, so I'm speaking for myself, I would rather have you go back, rewrite it, and come back to another councilor, City Council meeting, regular City Council meeting, and we'll go ahead and prove it. That's what I'm thinking. Based on your rewriting, unless there's some sort of emergency and bringing this forward.
Counselor Chair, may I add my motion to return this back to the administration?
That's what I'm thinking.
Support.
So, motion made by Councilman Muscat to go back to administration to have this rewritten and supported by Councilman Constan, is there any other discussions on that?
I just want to say one other thing.
Go ahead.
That previously, the mayor, not this mayor, but previous mayors in the past have made emergency decisions, like when there's, you know, huge sewer breaks that they had to, you know, had to get repaired right away, that was much more money than he's allowed to spend without council approval. So this is not abnormal, okay? So I just wanted to add that.
And if I may comment on that, Counselor Chair. The provision of the emergency management ordinance provides for certain expenditures of that nature.
Yes.
Okay, so amendment by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Constan, go ahead and bring this back to administration and bring back to City Council at a later date. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9D, Court Administrator Atkins, Extension of Agreement Between 20th District Court and the Police Officers Association of Michigan, 20th District Court Employees.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Constan.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the extension of the agreement between the 20th District Court and the Police Officers Association of Michigan, 20th District Court Employees on a day-by-day basis as outlined in 9D.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Constan, supported by Councilman Badun, is there any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9E, Parks and Recreation Director Laurence L, Fund Transfers.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Badun.
I make the recommendation motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following year-end funded transfer as outlined in 9E. Not necessary to read the following fund transfers.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Badun, supported by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion on that? I had a question for the Director. And on a lot of these expenses, there's nothing written on there other than just account numbers from one account number to another account number. How do we get a clarification as far as what specifically these were for?
Okay, I can actually give you the projects. We've got the Richard A. Young Kitchen renovation that's not completed, the Star Trek bike that you approved tonight, the refinishing of the meeting room at the Richard A. Young Center, which is actually the floor, redoing the interior of the men's sauna at Richard A. Young, the Central Park Lot resurfacing off from Kenlock, and then the project at the Canfield Center, which is the tile replacement. So that's to make sure that we're able to have the money or the funds to finish those projects. And I had a question earlier about the tennis courts. Just to be, to make you guys aware, we've actually spent quite a bit of money upgrading the Richard A. Young Center, and this alone here is almost $70,000. So we're doing in both ends of the city.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this?
You know, when we're on recreation, when we're on recreation, I sure hope that you do something with Eaton Center, get some people in there to run the place. A lot, you know, now we don't have anybody there anymore.
I actually just got finally some applications, and that's what we've been advertising for. So I'm going to be doing those interviews next week.
Please get somebody in there. I don't want Eaton Center to be the stepchild of the Recreation Department.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm going to hold that, I'm going to hold you to that.
Okay. At least 16 months, yes.
Okay. Now, I don't know if Brian's still on there, or maybe our Corporation Counselor.
Still on.
Honestly, for myself, and I'm just making sure, I mean, this is what the Director told us verbally, what all these accounts are. For myself personally, I feel more comfortable with the specific accounts written in there. But that's me, just throwing it in there. Is the way it is right now, Brian, I don't know if you can hear me, or you can't? Okay, come on up.
Getting your steps in today.
Hi, so the way in which it's phrased right now is just asking for permission, but once this new fiscal year budget starts, you simply would increase the accounts. But that's something that the new Comptroller is going to look into if you do want to try to increase her current budget because these programs were not budgeted for the next fiscal year, which we're about to enter. So what she's asking is for an increase in a lot of those line items. So you will receive at the next council meeting budget amendments for fiscal year '22, '23, which she's asking for increases because she didn't spend the money this fiscal year.
So it's being transferred over to the next year?
It's not being transferred, again, increase or decrease?
Well, because you said she did not use them this year.
Exactly, but that's not a transfer, it's just an increase or a decrease in different budgets.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Plenty of English is a transfer.
Go ahead.
What was that? I'm saying, plenty of English is a transfer.
Yeah, okay. So, item 9E, motion made by Councilman Badun, seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any other discussion items on that? Here are none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9F, Police Chief Hart, purchase and payment of body worn and in-car cameras.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Police Chief Hart to sign the quote with Axon Enterprise Inc. for body worn and in-car cameras for a total investment over a five-year period of $1.1 million, $42,413.32, and return the remaining bits to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the initial warrant in the amount of $154,405.22, and the treasurer to issue payment from account 265-331-981000. Moreover, authorize warrants to be issued for the payment of these services not to exceed $1.142,413.32. By doing so, the City Council authorizing any such warrant and payment without prior authorization authorization by the city council of the specific warrant and payment as permitted by and consistent with City Charter Section 8.9, as outlined in 9-F.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Conston, any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
All right, let's start with Councilman Bedun, then Councilman Muscat, then Councilman Ahmad.
So this is a great thing, I think it's a long time coming for the city of Dearborn Heights, you know, this is really, you know, this is accountability here, and I think the chief for bringing this forward. My only question this here is, we just did it, we just tabled Section 8.9. Where he went, but.
He went, he had to leave.
Well, go ahead.
Councilman Ahmad.
No, no, my question was.
Oh, what's?
So we tabled Section 8.9 on the last thing with authorization of, of the payments.
Catching me off guard. By doing, the city council authorizing any such warrants and payments without prior authorization of the city council of the specific warrants and payments as permitted by the consistent with city council, I'm going to refer this to the Corporation Counselor, if you don't mind.
If you could, please, Council Chair Pro Tem, read the last part of that language there.
Okay, here, here it goes. By doing so, the city council is authorizing any such warrant and payment without prior authorization by the city council of the specific warrant and payment as permitted by and consistent with the City Charter Section 8.9, as outlined in 9-F.
Okay, I don't think that that language is problematic, if you're saying, look, you can spend up to the $1.1 million, and you don't have to come back to council to end up doing it. If that's what the intention is, and you're fine with that, then this is fine.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure on that.
Right, it, it, the.
Because the one before we just.
There's a difference in interpretation between Mr. Jamal and myself with regard to Section 8.9, that, that is what I'll just end up saying, I could probably explain it later, but this is a long meeting already, and that could end up being an issue on something unlike this, where you're fine with the money being spent up to the $1.1 million. You want me to explain what I'm talking about, I'll explain it, I actually have a little chart together here for doing that for myself, but if we're going to end up coming back with the 8.9 issue later, then I can explain it at that point. What this motion would do would be to say that you can spend, that the administration can spend the $1.1 million or that exact amount that was used, up to that amount, and not have to come back to the administration, which in this situation, since you already have the backup, seems reasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, the body cameras are, really will more than pay for themselves, and if there's ever an issue about excessive force, the speed of prosecution, I know in the city of Dearborn, they had the body cameras, and we could, you know, play a video of an arrest or something for, if there was a discussion with the defense attorney, or questions, so it's a fairly large amount of money, but a good investment.
Councilman Ahmad.
Council Chair, thank you. This is very much needed in our city, and I do thank the police department for working on this, but I want to, I want to hear from Chief Hart, I know those bids were, were in before he joined the force, so did you have a chance to go over them, and are you pretty much comfortable with this?
Thank you very much for your question, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so this process had been bid out before, and what I'm asking council is to approve this Axon as being a sole source, since it has proprietary software to speak to our new Taser Sevens, excuse me, but we're also going to add some features in there that any time a gun is unholstered, that the body camera also comes on. So it's kind of separate from all of the bidding processes that were done before, I've checked with the federal government, the grant manager in DC, and they stated that as long as this meets our requirements for sole source and is approved by council, that we would be able to move forward with Axon, and Axon is the company that staff did a test and evaluation on, and came to the conclusion that they were the best product for Dearborn Heights, and I completely agree with them.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Council Chair.
Just want to say, I, I thank you for bringing this forward, and I know we've been waiting for this since 2020, so I hope this thing is rushed through as much as possible, because I think it's a very, very important item for our city and our residents.
Council Chair.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I also have Jen Skousan on as well, and she's representing Axon, if anyone had any specific questions for her, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
She was here, okay.
She is here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jen, let me see what the councilman has, and then we'll see if they have questions for you specifically, thank you, Jen. Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Council Chair. Now, this is, this, these numbers are for a five-year program, Chief, is that right?
That is correct, and we will also have a refresh of the technology at two and a half years, so it's really an excellent program that Axon developed, and they have some very innovative products, and I believe this is a very good five-year program for the community.
And also.
Am I able to speak real quick, Council?
Sure.
Yes, just, just give me one second, Jen, let me make sure the councilman's all set, we all set?
Yeah, maybe, no, I have one more thing, you know, I noticed, I hope, I might be mistaken, but the, the highest cost on here is for storage.
Yes, cloud storage is very expensive, I can speak to you from experiences in other communities where we had our local servers fail, and we had some use-of-force incidents, and we were unable to bring up the audio and video from those incidents, so we're kind of taking that threat, so to speak, out of the equation here by storing our video in the cloud, and it is, it is rather expensive, I will share with you, being at a conference right now, I did have an opportunity to speak with our partners at MM RMA, and they do have some grants that I will also be able to apply for after the fact here, and they cover about 50% of cloud storage. So I'm going to continue to work, even though we're, we looked, we're kind of heading towards approval tonight, that I'm also going to try to find ways to reduce the city's financial obligation on this as well.
One other question is, is there an additional charge for retrieving any of the data from the storage?
So that would be through the licenses that we have for evidence.com, and Jen, you shake your head no if I'm speaking out of turn here, but the evidence.com is a very powerful tool, and it does allow certain privileges for staff to be able to see and ultimately share videos with our prosecutor's office, with our court system, et cetera, so the evidence.com, those licenses afford us the opportunity to go back and look at that video and access it without cost.
Okay, thank you.
Council Chair.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Councilman, just before we start, let's go ahead and allow Jen to speak, go ahead, Jen.
Thank you all, a couple of quick items I just wanted to cover with this contract, is on the body camera side, you'll actually get refreshes at year two and a half and year five, so you actually get three full sets of body cameras for each officer, and with the in-car solution, you'll get new hardware at year five, so obviously, we hope you love Axon and want to stay with us, that makes the renewal costs a little bit less expensive because you have all brand-new hardware. Everything comes with a five-year no-questions-ask warranty, so if anything breaks the overnight equipment, you want to make sure the officers have the equipment they need, and Chief Hart was correct, there's no cost, this is your data, Axon does not have access to your video files, it's on your own server, so anytime video is needed to be viewed, shared, we offer free licenses to DAs and prosecutors, so there's no extra cost to share any of that evidence, this is Dearborn Heights evidence.
Okay, thank you, Jen, Councilman, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair, I just have a question for Jen, so with the equipment refresh, what happens with the old equipment, you guys take it back?
We do, so we'll send return shipping labels, so it's shipped back to us, and.
You may want to repeat that, just, all we guys, it gets shipped back to us, and that's it.
Oh, sorry, so we will send return shipping labels, so it gets shipped back to Axon at no cost to Dearborn Heights, and we will take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this?
Welcome to the 21st century.
Okay, so again, motion 9F, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Muscat, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried, I'm really happy for this one.
Council Chair, I'm sorry, have we still asked questions?
I'm sorry?
Have we still asked?
Jen?
When do we?
Jen, we can ask you, we're going to, we got more questions.
Chief Hart can answer, when do we expect to start implementing the cameras and start receiving them, and?
So in the backup material, I only have one screen tonight remotely here, but it does have delivery dates on there, so we can see delivery dates of the original product, and then we can see the delivery dates of those refreshes at two and a half, and then in the five-year mark. I want to say, as I was preparing for the meeting, I believe September is when the body cameras are going to arrive, is that true, Jen?
That's true, and there's, there's a chance they could come a little bit sooner than that, but that, I always under-promise and over-deliver, so.
That's a good thing, that's a good thing, and also, I'd like to point out, this is a in-car camera solution as well, so our 32 patrol vehicles are also going to be getting the new in-car camera system, our other system is failing, so this is kind of a proactive effort to make sure that we have seamless audio and video at our disposal to be, to cover any incident or allegations that we see coming forward.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it, Chief, thank you, Jen, we've already voted on this one, so thank you very much, and looking forward to this, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next up is item 11A, Mayor Bazey.
Did you vote on that?
Yes, we did, yes, we did. The next item on the agenda is from ordinances and resolutions, Mayor Bazey, first reading of proposed ordinance H22-02, amendment to City Code Section 6-97.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I'd like to move this to a study session, at first, when I read this, I was all for this ordinance, you know, there is things that happened at my house with cats destroying some of my summer furniture when they were covered up, but as I see a lot of the residents coming in and having some of their ideas, I think we should, they deserve to have at least be heard in a study session, that's my opinion, so if other city council people want to second that motion.
I second it.
So we can take a vote on the motion of having a study session then, since it's been seconded.
So, so I spoke with many residents in regards to this, and, and, and I thank the residents, Beth, the, the, many, many residents that contacted me, and I tell you, they opened up my mind, gave me totally different perspective than when I first read this, so I too am in favor of tabling this until we get a little bit more information. I did speak with one member of an organization, Beth is her name, and she mentioned she has no problem spearheading this, putting this together, helping, actually, she spoke earlier on a Zoom meeting, spearheading this, putting some committee together, maybe of some residents, possibly our director, maybe some members of the administration, to think of other options that are available to us, so at this particular point, personally, I'm in favor of tabling this, but before we do, because initially I had spoken with Director Dishroom, who had originally brought this forward as a part of our ordinance department, and so that we're not slamming his department or the administration, I'd like to give him an opportunity to speak, if you don't mind, Mr. Dishroom, and, and, and again, I'm still in favor of, in favor of tabling this, but I'd like to give him an opportunity to speak to the residents and the people that were concerned as far as why he originally brought this forward, and then we'll go ahead and go from there. I also do know that Ms. Allowee spoke with yourself, spoke with the mayor, and I spoke with Officer Bunker, and as I understand, there's been a little bit of a change of heart, but go ahead.
Good evening, we, we did speak, I did speak with Lisa, this is, this ordinance is not just specifically targeting cats, am I not loud enough? Seriously? Because I was trying to be nice, because I thought I was doing the microphone, this, this ordinance is not specifically targeting cats, and I know dogs are mentioned in there, we don't have feral dogs in the city that I know of, usually pretty good about eliminate, not eliminating, but getting those out of the city and getting them to the shelter. There are other issues in the city where people are complaining, not just about cats, people feed squirrels, raccoons, possums, everything, as many people is, are in here tonight to defend the cat feeding, there's twice as many people out there that complain about ground feeding in general, so getting to the TNR program that was, has been mentioned, we don't have a program per se, but we do when we have the ability, as you all are well aware, we're very short-staffed, and MHS is very good about accommodating us when we have the ability to trap and do the TNR and take the, the cat back into the area within one or two blocks when we can, so we don't have an actual program, it's not set up in the contract, and, and technically, they're considered a nuisance, so when you, when you get into discussions, it's not just a matter of somebody's feelings, there's only two entities that are allowed to impound animals, and the city and Corporation Counsel will back me up on this, according to ordinance, it's an animal control officer and a police officer, so when you get into a, a conversation about people trapping animals, you might be trapping somebody's cat and not know it, so I'm very open to the conversation, but I would like to see this ordinance go through because we have, we've had tickets dismissed in court where people are feeding other animals, and there's stuff on the ground, and it's bringing rats and rodents and other, other animals onto people's property, and they're very upset about that, so.
Okay, so if you don't mind, if you can stay there, Director, please, go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that this would seem to be the best idea, would be to refer this to a study session, but in advance of that, because what will end up happening is you will be bombarded as council members with more information about, whenever something comes up about regulating animals, we have this with the dangerous and vicious dogs ordinance, you will be bombarded with more stuff from throughout the entire country than you can imagine that you will end up getting. My recommendation is that whoever is, is spearheading these efforts from the animal activist community should end up sending their information specifically to ordinance officer Dishroom, particularly if there's an ordinance or two that they look at, because what we could do is do this kind of an ordinance with an exception for some sort of a program like they've talked about, so that we're not having a situation where the original ordinance, that this is from Section 6.97, was based on someone who was literally taking bags of feed and feeding pigeons, and I, Mayor Canfield said, you have to watch this whole video and report back to me, and it was this video showing roosting pigeons, like hundreds of them, and they would come down and swoop down on this backyard, so there is a reason to end up having this kind of regulation, and it goes back decades, and so the, the, the sense would be to end up making sure that ordinance officer, or ordinance director Dishroom gets this, and that the information also potentially gets forwarded to me, so I can evaluate it in advance of the study session, as opposed to it all coming over to you, and if you want to get it, you can obviously get it, but then we're not going to have an intelligent discussion at the, at the study session, if he doesn't get it and I don't end up getting it.
Council Chair, and I totally understand where you're coming from, Gary, but I, I can tell you, like I said, for myself, after it happens, yeah, I mean, nobody wants to be bombarded with anything, but I can tell you, myself, after I spoke with different residents, I had a totally different perspective on this, and, and, and seeing the humanity in it that a lot of the residents were concerned about, and, and I myself am concerned about, so, but also for the director, I know when I spoke with you, when this thing first came up, when this thing first came up, you mentioned something about a Dearborn ordinance that's already in place, and, and how we had to, unless I'm recalling this incorrectly, I thought off the top of my head, it was something to do with the Dearborn ordinance, you wanted to make some twists to our ordinance to reflect a little bit more closer to the Dearborn one, if I recall this correctly, I know it's been about a month or so.
The, the one, the one that I used was actually from LaVonia.
LaVonia, okay.
Yeah, so getting back to that, that concept, the other issue that you have, when you have people that are trying to, and I, I had this conversation with Lisa as well, when you have people that are involved and they're trying to manage feral cats, they're not necessarily trained and/or certified, so they're not doing things properly, so there, there's a lot that goes into it, Lisa has spent her own money, and I admire her very deeply, but most of the people, including herself, there's nobody in our. herself, there's nobody in our city that has had certification from MHS to do this. So, and I'm not saying that there's not people from other, other entities that aren't, but I'm not aware of them, so it's hard for me to be sympathetic or understanding, because most of the people that are out there are just feeding cats, and it's a free-for-all, and all the neighbors around them are calling because the cats are coming through the yard, feces, tearing their yards up, so you're only hearing one side of it. I hear it all. You don't have that luxury.
Sure.
If I want to call it that. So there's a lot of things to consider, very sympathetic. Lisa was tugging at the old heartstrings, right? I understand where she's coming from. Animal lover myself, I get it, but there has to be a system in place, it can't just be a free-for-all, or just people saying, "I'm, you know, I'm associated with such and such," because we've had people make that claim, and to my knowledge, and our agreement was with MHS. So when we have stray animals, that's where they go, and we're the ones that are authorized to impound them, not individual people.
Sure, and MHS, for those members of the audience that are not familiar, is the Michigan Humane Society. Councilman, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. And let me ask you a question, maybe we don't have to refer this back to the administration. What if we just remove feral cats and dogs out of this, and we just go ahead and make the vote?
Aye.
Because, I mean, look, at the end of the day.
If I may, you're going to end up running into the, to the same problem. You still have a prohibition on ground feeding. You still have a prohibition on the ground feeding in general, so you're, and they'll be considered potentially to be wild animals because they're feral, right? So you're going to still end up running into enforcement. I think the most prudent thing is to just take this to a study session and, and then work through the language, just because it, you know, as, as Bill stated, it's, it, some of us have seen it from the enforcement end, and, you know, you haven't necessarily heard of it from the enforcement end as much, and then you'll be able to get a perspective where you take the differing interests and then hopefully come up with something that you feel comfortable with that will better suit the city.
Council Chair. Okay, Councilman, go ahead.
Any idea, Mr. Dishroom, how long it take to be certified for you?
I have no idea what that entails, that's not something we've ever gotten into the discussion of or the realm of, but I have full faith in MHS, they do have a certification program, and like I said, they do occasionally help us when we take cats there when we have the opportunity, but we don't have a program in place. And I, again, I'm not opposed to it, so, but they, they, they take the time and they make sure people understand everything about what their responsibilities are, and that includes making sure the cats are healthy and not spreading disease and illness. There's diseases that they can spread quickly amongst the cat community when they all gather and eat, so that's concern for everybody in the community as well, so.
So Director, I can just speak for myself, I know I spoke to you, and I do totally understand your, your end of it, and I do also understand a lot of the residents that are concerned about, you know, wild animals going, you know, going to town, I guess if you want to call it, all over the city. But I also understand some of the residents' concerns about, and even my concern about doing something more, in a more humane way. So I think in my personal opinion, one out of seven, I think that this should be taken to a study session, we table this for right now, we get a little bit more information on our end, you give us your input a little bit more in a, in a longer session, and then we decide which direction we want to go with, because this has been, it's not an emergency situation where we got to put it into effect this week.
I keep hearing that word, I don't know where that came from. Where did that come from? I heard somebody mention it was an emergency.
It's not in the ordinance.
I mean, it's pressing, but.
It's not in the ordinance.
Okay, I didn't understand, I heard a few people say that.
Yeah, it is not in the ordinance.
That's fine, I just didn't understand that.
This would be a first reading, it'd have to go through two readings in order to basically end up being adopted, and there will probably be some tweaks, even the, even Bill and I discussed certain minor changes to this, even if you were perfectly fine with the way it is.
Correct.
If you're not, then again, we could put exceptions in, that would be consistent with your wishes.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Councilman? I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman.
I had two bad experiences. This was a few years ago when I was ground feeding, I had a possum show up instead of a cat, or the community cat that was sitting on the porch, put that. I then was feeding birds in the backyard bread. Well, the rats found the, the bread, they got into my car wires and ate them, and it cost me over $400 to fix my car. So those are a couple of the bad parts. However, if, if we can get something to do with the TNR, the trap, neuter, and return, I'd be willing to go along with that, but only if that can be done. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go ahead and take this to a vote, motion by Councilman Muscat, and who? Who had seconded? I did, okay. Seconded, but, okay. I seconded that, so we're going to go ahead and take this thing to a study session. Take it to a study session. So all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item from Treasurer Hicks Clayton, City of Dearborn Heights Resolution opposing Michigan House bills 4729-4730-4731 and 4732. Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the City of Dearborn Heights Resolution opposing Michigan House bills 4729, 4730, 4731, and 4732, and stands up to corporations that data mine public records for profit while placing the burden on Wayne County taxpayers as outlined in 11-B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Glad to hear from Treasurer, Council Chair.
I know there's no questions, which I appreciate, by the way, honorable body, but for the public's information, I just want to share with you what this resolution is about. And what it's about is that there are bills proposed in Lansing that would allow for Zillow, which is a for-profit company, to have access to our tax records and information at little or no charge. Now, this is taxing on your resources, but not only that, but Zillow sells those records, which increases or puts you at risk, our constituents at risk of fraud and theft, and it does place a burden on the taxpayers for City of Dearborn Heights, because it takes time to run and answer the reports they're asking for. So along with the Michigan Association Register of Deeds and the Michigan Association of County Treasurers, and many treasurers across the state of Michigan, we are opposing these bills and we ask for your adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. So motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman, I'm going to change it to Councilwoman Breyer. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is agenda item 12A, Mayor Bazey, Warren Valley Golf Course, proposed agreement by ISA Brothers.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive, note, excuse me, yes, note and file in the latest version of the agreement of Warren Valley Golf Course as proposed by ISA Brothers. An updated version will be presented to the City Council approval on a later date as outlined in 12A.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Conston. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
I've got.
If you don't mind, before we have an updated version, while the updated version comes to you, can we have a study session on that, so we can go through the updated version, so we can either have our comments, and do you think that's a good idea or not? I don't know.
Well, if I may, there's, frankly, there are just a few minor things that need to be tweaked, and then with Mr. Schenk, he and I will have to end up dealing with the Title VI language that he's proposed, which could end up being a bit of an issue, but, you know, we're trying to work, both of us are trying to work for our respective clients the best we, we can. Part of the reason why this is on is to give you an update, and also because the things that are left to be really looked at and negotiated are really more legal issues. So, you know, part of it was to get your, to get your sense of how you feel about this particular, this particular agreement, or to inform you further of it, just to make sure we're, we're acting in a way that's consistent with what this honorable body wants.
And, and not, not to change the subject, or it may be related or not, but does, will Warren Valley Golf Course still be under Parks and Recreation?
I, I think that that.
So we can try to get grant money to try to help as much as we can?
Well, I think that's actually an issue between the administration and the council, the mayor and the council, in terms of how this can be organized. It could be put in Parks and Recreation, it could be its own standalone department, if you want.
I just want to try to see us receiving as much money as possible, that's grant money, that can go toward this golf course to ease the burden on everyone, including the taxpayers.
Well, then, I think that that's.
That's all I'm trying to look at.
Right, and I think that that is a matter that really could be addressed between, it's really more a matter of how can we best get to end up getting the money in the long run? I don't have any special expertise with regard to that. That would be between yourself and the mayor.
Okay, thank you. So, so I had a couple of questions in regards to this contract. I went through, and first of all, let me start with this, I fully support the ISA Brothers taking over this particular golf course, because I think, I have no doubt in my mind they'll do a great job. As a matter of fact, the former Dearborn Councilman that came in, Mr. Tofalski, and spoke in regards to the Detroit business that ISA Brothers started and got it going to great success. It took me a while to think about it, but then I remembered the car wash on Greenfield, I assume that's what he's referencing, yeah, and great business and run like A-plus. But I do have some questions in regards to the contract and some concerns. First of all, one of the reasons that I chose the ISA Brothers at the time where we had the four bids was because the ISA Brothers were able and willing to take over the entire project, which would have been the, what do you call it, the hall, the pro shop, the bar, and then the golf course. In this particular contract, we don't have the golf course any longer included in that. Now, I went through and walked through the golf course throughout, myself and Mr. ISA and a couple of residents also, one resident, I'm sorry, and there's a lot of work to be done there, I mean, a lot of work. So for those that think we could get this thing going today, tomorrow, next week, or next month, I'm not an expert on golf courses, but I can tell you, there's, I do know real estate, there's a lot of work to be done on the structure and on the golf course itself. Lots of work left to be done, definitely not in golfing position, but nevertheless, I am concerned about why the golf course is not included in there and would not even be taken into consideration until next year. That was one concern. And I'll find out who's going to answer this question, I'm not sure if it's going to be Mayor, yourself, or maybe even the ISA Brothers. The other concern that I had is, I picked the ISA Brothers because I felt they would do the best job, and again, they were taking on the full project, but it was also 10% of the profits that we were supposed to be receiving back as a city, and in this contract, I went through it a couple of different times, I did not see the 10% coming back to the city from the profits. I see that taken away, that was another concern. The third concern is on page, Larry said not including the course, on page two, no golf, ISA Brothers. ISA Brothers would be taking care of the grass, which is good, but we still need a little bit more, or a lot more than just cutting of the grass. In order to get it to golf condition, you need fertilizing experts, et cetera, et cetera. So the gentleman here, in regards to being a golf consultant, actually brought a smile to my face, at least, because I know the ISA Brothers know how to run a business. I didn't even have the slightest of doubt on that, but I had some concerns, because I, even Mr. ISA himself mentioned that, hey, golf is not his field of expertise, and neither is it mine, so I'm glad at least he has a vision, like he mentioned before at previous meetings, and during this meeting, which is the first time I'm finding out, that at least he's bringing in, you know, golf experts, or at least people that are consultants or familiar with golfing, to give him some advice, so I'm happy for that. That was good. And then where are we talking? Oh, I did have concerns also on item number, on page three, number seven. Our recreation department's been doing more and more events at different venues, including specifically at Warren Valley Golf Course. In this contract, item number seven, we as a city would be allowed 10 events. I wanted, I know it's a lot, but, you know, sometimes, and I want to get the input on this one from maybe the recreation department, or maybe up to 15 events, maybe the last five could be paid, I'm not sure, but I, but I would like to see more than, at least the option of more than 10 events, and I'd like to see, I'd like to know why just 10 events. So again, in summary, questions I have is why the golf course is not included, the 10%, and the 10 events. I'm not sure who wants to answer these.
Do you want me to quickly start, or? Okay, all right. So basically, the nature of the agreement is different than what was, oh, I thought I was close enough, sorry. The nature of the agreement is different than what was originally anticipated, because the condition of the premises were far worse than what was originally believed. And so this is not a concession agreement, it is a straight-up lease agreement. So instead of being a concessioneer, ISA Brothers would end up being a tenant, all right? So the idea of a 10% cut on revenues, we could include that, but with the, the notion that there is going to be an anticipated $3.4 million in investments by ISA Brothers, that was not something which they were willing to, to do. They basically said, "Look, we need to be able to recoup the amount of money that we intend to have, and we think we need to do that by virtue of a lease with this particular amount and no escalator for up to 20 years." So that's why you don't have the 10% coming back, and that's why you have the nature of the agreement as a lease as opposed to a concession agreement. A concession agreement is normally essentially the concessioneer has a license to operate the business, to control the premises to the degree that the city is willing to do that. Mr. Deeb, I believe, has a huge amount of knowledge about these types of issues, if you have a question about the difference between how concessioneer works vis-à-vis a, a straight-up tenant. But this was going to be a landlord-tenant agreement as opposed to a straight-up concession agreement. And basically, the idea was, "Look, we do not have a good enough handle on the condition of golf course to know exactly how to handle it." So what was agreed to was, "We will agree to negotiate an agreement to encompass the entire Warren Valley Golf Course, including the golf course, but we're going to start with the banquet facility, because to be frank, the banquet facility is what is likely to generate the most revenue." And that's part of the issue in this situation. You've had a lot of people talk about how, you know, the golf course is doing so well, and, you know, where it was doing well in the past. The fact is, is that we did not get paid what we were supposed to get paid by the prior concessioneer. Simple, straight-up contractual obligations were not met, all right? So, and, and part of that was based on a plea of poverty, and part of that was based on golf course operations. So that's why it has been approached in the way that it has been with respect to, we all know that the banquet facility is going to be a good winner with ISA Brothers running it, let's get that up and running and evaluate everything in terms of the golf course, and come up with either an addendum to the agreement that we will have, or a new agreement that involves everything. And I do want to note just a couple of other, other things that are a little different in this situation.
Well, let's, let's address, if you don't mind, Gary, the first part. So, so two questions I have on that. Number one, what is the disadvantage to us as a city from going from being a concessioneer to being a lease or, Lizzie?
The potential disadvantages are that essentially we don't have as much control over the premises. So for example, where you are referring to, you know, a tenant has control over the premises, occupies the premises, and the landlord only has access to those premises to the degree that the lease acknowledges that, that right. A concessioneer normally. A concessioneer, normally, the city would have complete access to the premises whenever it wanted to have it. It wouldn't necessarily be able to use the premises whenever it would want to. We would still need to end up negotiating that. But the idea is, as a concessioneer, you are essentially, essentially a licensee, namely a person who is allowed to end up using the premises, but subject to our interest, as opposed to the city is giving you these premises and we can only have access per the lease.
So why would we give that up as a city, then? Why would we give up that right? Because originally, it started as a concessioneer. From day one, it started as a concessioneer. Now we're switching it to...
Uh, uh, that was what was, was negotiated in, in, in these circumstances. That was what was, felt the best that we would be able to achieve in this situation.
And, and what would happen? Let's, let's, let's talk about the elephant in the room. So let's pretend, a year from now, and he's got the catering business, and, not the catering, I'm sorry, the, the hall, and everything's up and running, and it's running great, profitable, he's happy, the whole nine yards. But let's say we don't come to an agreement on the golf course part, then what happens?
Um, that is...
Is that potentially happening?
That, that, that could potentially happen, and to be candid, that could end up being an issue, because then you're separating out the most profitable thing from the less profitable and potentially break even. Maybe you need the banquet facility to subsidize the golf course operating.
So let's pretend Mr. Issa hypothetically decides that our proposal on the golf course will just not work for him. And then we can't find another person to take over the golf course, because just like it wouldn't work for him, it probably wouldn't work for, for, for Person B, or Person C, or Person D. So now we have a golf course that's now up and running, we have a banquet facility that's running profitably for Mr. Issa, which I'm happy for him, but to me, it's a package deal. It's not a separate deal. And when we separate it, we take the risk of not finding somebody to operate the golf course, which is ultimately, yes, I'd love to have a profit, but we are not, we are a city, it's not a business. Now, I run a business, and my real estate business is run for a profit, clearly. But as a city, we're to provide services, more important than just for a profit. And I'm not questioning you, because you're the guilty party, I'm just speaking generically. So it's just been, uh, spoken towards you, but it's not used specifically. But then, if we just focus on the profit, and the banquet facility's running well, and we're making great profit, or, or he's, Mr. Issa is making great profit, let's throw $2 million a year he's making. That doesn't do us as a city, who I represent, any good, because now we have a golf course that's not open. So the gentleman is making great money, and I'm happy for him. I wish he makes $80 billion. But we're not making profits, we're not making the 10% that we originally were promised, and we have a golf course that could potentially, hypothetically, be shut down. Because if, if it's not good enough for Mr. Issa or the Issa Brothers to take over the golf course, then it probably wouldn't be, more likely, or possibly, it's very minimal, it's possibly not good enough for another potential person to take over the golf course. So now we have a golf course that could cost us tons of money to be able to run it, not run it, I'm sorry, to upkeep it, and it's not open, and nobody wants it, and we're stuck with a golf course, but meanwhile, we signed an agreement with the Issa Brothers to run a profitable for them, side note, business, but not doing us any good, other than the $5,000 a month, which is a total of $60,000. That, to me, with all due respect, honestly, is not a good business decision, for me. I would like to see it where it's a combined situation, and if it's just the golf facility, the, um...
Banquet facility?
Banquet facility, I'm sorry. It, to me, it would, for me personally, it would not work. And, and the second question, you said the 10%, because it's now leasing, you said that would be wiped away? So that could obviously wipe away potential profit.
We could include that, but it, it, that was not something that was acceptable to Issa Brothers.
Right. But it would not be included any longer today, because today he's not taking over the golf course, so he'd just be taking over the banquet facility. So that 10% is potential, obviously, losses for us as a city.
I, yes.
Okay. And then, the, the last question was, uh, 10 events. I know that was not an end-all, but I, I, I'm just curious where the number 10 came in, and I'm not, I'm not sure if Kim can answer this. Is 10 enough?
Well, as of right now, we don't do more than 10, but that was because...
Sorry.
Right now, we don't do more than 10, but, um, the, in, uh, the issues that we had last time was, we couldn't have anything on the weekends, because that's the major, uh, money-making days, um, for the, um, you know, the golf, uh, clubhouse, yeah. Um, they always had weddings on Friday and Saturday. So some of the da, things that we wanted to do, like the daddy-daughter dance, we wanted to do one there that would be real nice. We couldn't have that unless they had the date open.
Sure.
And it wasn't booked, so...
Yeah, and, and our number one focus is obviously the golf course and the banquet facility.
Correct, yeah.
They're number one, I get that, but I'm just wondering roughly...
But that's what, yeah, I've been told by the previous person, so...
So, with permission, Corporation, uh, you had something, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
So, we actually wanted to, I know the 10%, we're talking about the golf, you know, the golf business, you know, the 10% also the alcohol, uh, that we, obviously, the Issa Brothers are interested in the golf course. You know, they brought, uh, three consultants to look at it, you know, several times, and today, obviously, today. And, uh, some of the stuff, the golf course, we need to look at it as a city, because I mentioned before the liabilities, you know, with the cart path. We have two restrooms, also, there's holes, holes in the roof of the, and it was poorly maintained. It was, that, that place is a mess. We do have pictures, you know, from the day we took, we took over. There's a lot of pictures, and we took hundreds of pictures. So, we do, we do have, excuse me, I'm talking here...
Okay, if you don't mind, please.
So there's, there's a lot of pictures that we took the day, uh, it was, it was, uh, it was vacated by the previous concessioneer. And, I mean, that place was a mess, it's still a mess. You know, we still have a leaking roof on, uh, the banquet, uh, we have, uh, uh, some of the tiles are coming down. There's, uh, bubbles in the, in the walls where the, the water's coming down, the, the roof, and also the, the awning roof is, is bad, obviously. Also, the pumps, we're looking at that. The bridges, we need to look at that as well. So, before we even operate the golf course, we need to make sure it's safe, uh, to be, to be used. And we have Mr. Deeb, obviously, he's got a lot of experience, you know, in, in engineering, and so he is looking at the golf course to make sure. We are gonna work parallel with the banquet. The banquet's gonna need more work than the golf course.
I agree.
So, he's already begun to bring in companies to look at, you know, some things, you know, the, the bridges, the pumps, also the, the two bathrooms. So he, he is ge, getting bids to see what we can do at the same time.
Sir?
We are, please. Okay, we, we are working parallel paths to make sure that both of them are gonna be done about the same time. We are gonna go back and we gotta talk, and Issa Brothers, they are very interested in the golf course, obviously. You know, I mean, they spent, they spent money bringing this gentleman over here to assess it. So if they weren't interested, why would they be spending money on that? And they're still maintaining the greens, they're still gonna be cutting the grass. So, we are gonna make sure that it's, uh, it's safe for residents to golf on, before we let anybody go off on that golf course.
I appreciate that. And a lot of comments you made, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I wholeheartedly agree. I walked through the golf course, uh, again, I, I'll just relate it to the real estate business. If that was a home, and I looked at it like that, I'd probably recommend to my client not to buy it, and definitely not to buy it without a private inspection, because there's a lot of work to be done there. That one, there's no negotiations on. I have no doubt about it. But my concern is, if they don't take on the golf course, i- if I was a man, I would say they're gonna take it. But what if they didn't? We, we have to ask ourselves that. So, what I'm gonna do, um, if you don't mind, Director, because, uh, the Councilman had a question for us, go ahead.
Uh, it, it wasn't much of a question. I, I think ultimately here, uh, everybody knows, and well, what I, you know, what I see in the Issa Brothers, uh, win this, I swear to God, it's a smile from ear to ear. Uh, I had great conversations, uh, with, with Mr. Issa here, and I want you guys to know, I know there's a lot of naysayers. He's gonna do the right thing. Um, and that's just where we're gonna stand. He's gonna do the right things. He's never invested in something unless he knew he can invest in it. And I'm gonna tell you, Mr. Issa, um, I, I read this contract, I have, I share some of those same things. You have to take the golf course, because that's what we agreed to. I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm gonna oppose every second that you say you're not gonna take the golf course. The second you say you're gonna take the golf course, I'm voting yes on this, and I think everybody else here, because I, I'm gonna tell you guys, he's gonna do a wonderful job. The place is gonna look good, and you know, Mr. Issa, I think what you need to start doing is showing the rendering, maybe going on social media, showing, showing the things that you're gonna do, because you're gonna do a great job. You're gonna be successful, you're gonna operate that golf course, you're gonna operate the banquet, and you're ultimately, everybody's gonna look back and say, "Man, you know what? I might just operate the whole city." Uh, I'm just kidding, we're not gonna ask you to go that far. Um, but, but, but I, but I do want you to know, um, the golf course, and I know that, you know, there's a lot that needs to be done, and it's, it's a really bad shape, but the golf course has to come with the contract. It can't just be one, or, "Hey, let's assess it and see what it's gonna look like," and that's, that's my first thing. My second thing is, cutting the greens, we're gonna, we have to cut the whole golf course. Uh, maybe if that means that we can work in, in correlation with the city, um, because I don't think it should ultimately be on, on, uh, Mr. Issa in the beginning, but ultimately, the entire golf course needs to be cut, not just the greens, everything. Um, and, and that has to be a collaboration amongst all of us, uh...
If, if you're still speaking, Councilman, I don't want to...
No, well, yeah, that's what I'm just saying. So I mean, I don't know if we can collaborate. I'll take that back. But what I will tell you is, the whole place needs to be cut. And I know it's a lot of acres, and I know it's very expensive, um, but I'm gonna tell you, by the time that this golf course is done and over with, it's gonna look good. It's gonna actually look great. It's gonna look better than we've ever seen it. We're gonna be so surprised that the city looks this well. But I'm gonna tell you, um, we, you know, we have to be able to say that they come as a package deal. Understood? There's not even a discussion regarding it.
Counselor.
Okay. I just wanted to const, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So, so just so we're all the same page.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm glad Mr. Issa stood up, because I was gonna ask you to speak anyway, so I'm glad you stood up. So I'm gonna go with the Corporate Counselor, then Mr. Deeb, then Mr. Issa.
Okay. We do have to recognize that all of this stems from fairly extensive negotiations over a course of, of time, uh, where the mayor, Chief of Staff, Mr. Deeb at times, myself, Mr. Schenk, Mr. Issa have had various conversations. So, you know, it takes two to tango on some of these issues, and some of this has been based on the fact that Mr. Issa is, is recognized as such an outstanding businessman, and that's where some of these terms reflect things. So, uh, and there is another issue here that we're not talking about, which has been talked about by some of the people who are out here, which is, the condition of the golf course continues to deteriorate. So that was part of, part of what has driven the administration to take the tact that it has with respect to this. Now, again, part of the reason for getting this on the agenda was to get your feedback, and on some points, and it seems like some of that feedback is inconsistent with how this agreement is drafted, I guess is all I'll end up saying. But, um, you know, it's important to recognize that, you know, we, just because we want something, we're not necessarily going to end up getting an agreement on that particular one.
Sure. Okay, um, if you don't mind, I'm gonna do ladies first. Councilwoman, go ahead.
Okay, it's been three months. We agreed to have Mr. Issa take this over. Initially, I wasn't in favor, because I wanted it to be opened up and everybody get the, the proper bid in. However, he accepted the whole package, and I agree with Mo, it's gotta be a package deal. And on that 10% issue, um, from what I've heard from businesspeople, the 10% comes off gross, not profit, because people can fudge it here and there and say they're giving money to this one, they're giving money to that, and then we get booked out of some money as well. So I think it's gotta end up being a package deal. And the tenant aspect, he's just paying us a little bit of money every month. If he were the concierge, we would be making more money, a percentage.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, so, um...
And then, go ahead.
Thank you, Council, uh, Chairman. Um, I just wanted to, um, first of all, uh, concentrate on the, uh, conditions, on the technical part. I'm an engineer, I'm not a golf operator, and I, I believe we, uh, we heard enough about the actual golf operation. So I wanted to, uh, concentrate on the conditions that the mayor mentioned, uh, just a few of them. Um, and, and I had a chance to go, um, uh, over some of the legacy systems that you, you don't see in the day-to-day operation of a golf course. The behind-the-scenes systems, the underground utilities, the electrical systems, the structural systems, the, the building conditions, um, um, so, um, and, and some of these things, um, have been neglected for a long, long time. And, and there is no doubt as, as to, um, the operating conditions. I mean, this, uh, there were so many unknowns. Some of the contractors I brought in to give me, uh, uh, prices on trying to activate the remote bathrooms couldn't even locate the utility serving those bathrooms. So in order to try to, 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 um, uh, find a, a working system, we couldn't find where the system was fed from. There were no records kept. Um, and, and I know they don't work today, at least the remote, uh, bathrooms. I just couldn't even tell you to put a price on trying to reactivate them, because I need to know how far I need to go to, to find a service or to even drain them. So that's just some of the conditions, and some of them, uh, the majority of which are safety issues. Uh, I mean, the cart paths, uh, um, have some erosion issues that you probably don't wanna send Mr. Public in a cart at a location, because then you'll be, you know, uh, whether you're the operator or the owner of the facility, that's a liability issue. Uh, we have, uh, um, I believe, um, uh, Councilman Muscat have, uh, located the high, um, um, voltage electrical panel that's halfway ready to go in the river, and that's not a good thing to have. Um, I can't tell you about the, the prices of, of the pumps, because you need to find out the extent of the damage. Unfortunately, none of these, um, uh, records were turned over to us, including, um, um, you know, equipment conditions, and I know, based on the structural, uh, the status of the structures, the maintenance building, the, um, uh, the garages, that very little maintenance was done. Um, I mean, and that's just, um, you know, some of the issues that we're facing. So now, whether it be part of the same contract or a separate, a needs assessment needs to be done before a price, um, you know, and it is, it is a concern. I mean, it's, it's a safety issue that...
Council Chair.
Okay, just one second, Councilman. Wait, uh, there's still Mr. Vidun, and then Councilman Muscat, and then we'll go with Mr. Issa.
And, and it's to Mr. Deeb. Thank you, Mr. Deeb. And I, honest to God, I'm always gonna, you know, cheer you on for all the hard work that you do. I mean, I know the amount of work that you do goes, doesn't go unnoticed. But I'm gonna tell you, us as a city, we need to, if, if it's not happening, we need to put all hands on, duck on tag, a golf course right now, to stop preventing it from deteriorating any worse than what it is right now. I mean, right now, we don't, we don't have a contract signed, right? At the end of the day, that, that's my son's golf course, that's my, that's my neighbor's golf course, that's every single person in this room that lives in Dearborn Heights, that's their golf course. And we're expecting myself, this administration, you, all the expertise who operate this city day in and day out, to make sure that that golf course no longer deteriorates. Um, we need to, we need to put a plan together to figure out what we need to do about that golf course. Because as of right now, we're not doing a good job. So do myself...
So as the mayor indicated, the condition assessment is probably in order at this point, because you'll need to get, in order to design a repair, you, you need to identify all of it.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I agree.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Next up is Councilman Muscat, and then Councilman Amad.
Um, you know, I want this to happen desperately, but once we agree to a contract like this, we don't include the golf course, I, I wasn't gonna say anything, but, you know, Councilman, uh, Council Chair Abdullah said it for us. Um, you know, when we had the, the RFPs, or RFQs, however you wanna, uh, put it, it was for the whole thing. We had people that bid just on the, the concession part, and only one bid on both. That was why I went with the Issa Brothers, because they went with the whole thing. I didn't have to go find this guy or find that guy. It's very hard not to, to agree to something when it's not in writing, and maybe later hard not to, to agree to something when it's not in writing, and maybe later on, it gets put in writing. We've seen in the past where we've done things. I remember doing a, somebody doing a zoning change, say we're gonna build X. Once they rezoned it for them, they built Y. And it was nothing we could do about it. I don't want that to happen to this golf course. I don't want it that. I've gotta get some assurances somewhere that this golf course is gonna be operational. And I don't know how we're gonna do that. I really don't. And I don't want, I don't wanna say no to this and prolong the agony. So are we saying this is not the actual?
No, it's a draft.
It's a draft. Okay.
This is, this is a draft, but with, if, if you want us to go in a different direction, and Mr. Isa is willing to go in a different direction, then that's why, that's why we presented this. It doesn't sound like, it sounds like there's a consensus on the council as a body, not to separate the two out and to insist that the two of them be together.
Because we'd be going against the RFP, right?
That's what, I'm sorry?
Wouldn't we be going against the RFP?
No, the RFP allowed for, the RFP package allowed for different things to be done. It would be, however, different than how it was originally bid.
Okay. Then I, then I misspoke.
Well, your point is the same. I just have to be more technically correct.
So we can approve this as the draft, because it's note and file.
Well, receive note and file just means you acknowledge that you've received it. It doesn't mean that you're approving anything. But if, so you can end up doing that, but if you express to us, look, we want these things linked, then it's, and that sounds like there's five of you at least who feel that way, then we know that we need to go back to the, to Mr. Isa and Mr. Shank and discuss it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Ahmad and Councilman Wansel.
Thank you, Council Chair. I do share the same concern like you guys.
Sir, 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 please.
Why don't you put your money where your mouth is, and you go run the golf course?
Sam.
You wanna golf for free?
Sam. Go ahead.
I'm sick and tired of this bashing.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair. I do share the same concern like you guys. But I wanted to go back to the estimate that gentleman provided. So what was the estimate included? Like, just a?
Step up to the podium, please.
Step up to the podium, if you don't mind.
So there are four buckets of the repairs. The first involves the capital purchase of the equipment, right? There are no mowers there. There's one tractor that's probably repairable. There's one greens mower that may be repairable. We weren't able to get it turned over to start, but it appears that it could be repaired. Outside of that, we need a bush hog, or two bush hog mowers, two rough mowers, two fairway mowers, two T-box mowers, two greens mowers, two greens rollers, two bunker rakes, to repair the tractor, a sprayer, three utility carts, and chemicals, which include nutrients and pesticides. That bucket altogether is low of 285,000, high of 540,000. The labor, which includes across 20 weeks, 60 hours weekly of mowing at $20 an hour, low of 48,000, high of, or I'm sorry, a low of 24,000, a high of 48,000. Definitely need a full-time superintendent, low of 80,000, high of 120,000. All-purpose grounds crew with 120 weekly hours. That goes to things like tree removal, patching the cart paths, irrigation repair. That has a low of 72,000, I'm sorry, low of 48,000, a high of 72,000. Total labor, 240,000, high 152,000, low. The estimate on the irrigation and pump house repair, we've had Flowtronics there who installed a system in 1994 out from Ohio. They estimate between 50 to 300,000. They'll be out in July to actually power up the system and test it out. And then finally, for bunker restoration, between labor and the actual sand, which is relatively cheap, for 25 bunkers, we're looking at 32,500 is the low, 65,000 is the high. The total lows, best case scenario is 519,000. In the current state, the total high, worst case scenario, is 1,145,000. That's golf course only. That doesn't include things like the bathrooms. I didn't have an opportunity to inspect those.
But that does include the grass.
Absolutely.
Bringing it up to par of, you know, fertilizing.
100%, yeah.
Good grass.
Well, we'd speak, what we're speaking about right now is immediately mowing everything from T to green. That's gonna leave the roughs to grow out a little bit. And the roughs aren't in ideal shape. Fortunately, it's called a single-line irrigation system. There's just one line that goes right from the T to the greens. The roughs will never be irrigated, right? So what we wanna do is, we wanna start mowing, popping those irrigation heads, determining where we have leakage, and where we have, or where we have leakage in the irrigation system, where the drainage system may be clogged, and where that's not, you know, where the system can't properly drain. All of the ponds are completely empty. So those ponds need to be pumped back up and filled with water. There's quite a bit of work to do just to get the course.
This is for the entire golf course?
The entire golf, yeah. So there are four golf courses, or four holes on the golf course, three on the east side, one on the west side, that are apparent that they've obviously been flooded over and over and over again. What we talked about is immediately for next year, we wanna get 18 holes open, and then open up nine holes following in 2024. And then, you know, potentially open it for the full 36 in 2024, although Mr. Isa has spoken about potentially putting in a dome, a pool, a recreation area, driving range with that last nine holes. It hurts me to hear a little bit. Donald, that's a Donald Ross golf course. He's one of the most renowned designers in the country. It really is a special piece of property that more unfortunate.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
So basically, your estimate, sir, covers everything but the bathrooms. Is there anything else left?
Structural. I didn't hear anything about the structure.
Yeah, I didn't inspect, I didn't inspect bridges.
We're not talking about the banquet. We're talking about just the golf course.
Yeah, this is just the grounds.
What structure, the?
Maintenance building, your outdoor structures. There are quite a few structures.
The bridges and stuff like that?
Right. So I highly recommend for, I know we can't get the residents to go through that, but I highly recommend for council members to just walk, get a hold of administration, set up an appointment, go walk the course. I'm telling you guys, once I walked, I had a whole different perspective as far as where this golf course is at. There's a lot of work to be done, but I know the Isa brothers are up to the task.
I'm sorry, one, I still have one more thing, Council Chair. So I know there's gonna be an expansion on the building, the footprint, the banquet's gonna be, gonna make it larger, but it doesn't say here like how large the building's gonna be. Any idea, Mr. Isa?
Real quick. So far, listen, right now, there's no contract. I've spent a lot of time, money, even time staying here away from my kids, from an 8:00 AM shift till right now. We don't know what's going on yet. I don't know what I'm doing. I have plans for it, but I, I don't have hope yet. You know, all the bashing, I'm cutting the grass in the front, I'm cleaning up the front. I cut the greens once. I'm spending hours there weekly taking people, and now that you guys, nobody knows about. Not even the mayor, not even the city council, nobody does. I'm doing it on my own will, to try to get this thing for the residents, so I can prove a point to the residents that it is gonna be a gem, and it is gonna be the best golf course out there.
We trust you, Councilor.
But after the last meeting, I got tired, man. I'm really tired. You guys should be here kissing my, you know what, come on and do this, not pushing this thing around and dragging it three months. You know what I'm saying? I'm investing the money, not you guys, not the taxpayers, nobody, I am, right? So I expect a return on my money. I'm a businessman. I'm not here to do charity. This is not charity. I do my charity separately. You know what I'm saying? So if I'm gonna, when I originally bid this thing, we thought we're gonna come in, everything is there, right? We're gonna come in, we're gonna run it, according to the way it was, keep the staff that was working, get everybody happy. And as we go, we start remodeling. We'll start fixing things as we go. Once it becomes winter, fall, the golf course shuts down, you know, then we start working on the inside of the building. We got in there, we won the bid, we went in there, nothing is there. So the bid changed, obviously. It had to shut down, because I ain't got the equipment to cut the grass. The city ain't got it. There's no staff, there's no kitchen equipment, there's nothing there. And you guys all know this already. We already talked about this plenty of times, right? So things changed. So I was about to back out again out of it, to be honest with you, until the last meeting. So then we sat again, we had a meeting, we said, you know what, guys, this is the way I'm gonna do this. Now it's, it's in my court. This is the way I'm gonna operate. I'm gonna, I'm spending the money. This is what I want to happen. I'm being honest with you guys, how it is. Golf course needs a lot of money, according to my, you know, my right-hand man. I mean, it's not a lot of money, but it is, it is a million dollars. And it could go plus-plus. That's not with the golf carts, we're not talking, you know? This is just estimated stuff. This is the city's responsibility, not mine, not nobody's. This is the city's responsibility. And the city's gotta do it. They gotta cut the grass, they gotta maintain it, they gotta bring it up to code, they gotta get a CVO on that property. That's not my responsibility. I didn't sign up for that. That's not what I won the bid on. I won the bid on an operating golf course. And it's not an operating golf course, according to me, and to you guys, and you guys all know this. Wayne County ran away from this golf course for a reason. Trust me. So I said to the, you know, to my, to my attorney, I'm, I'll go in there, I'll start on the banquet area, the restaurant, the bar and grill, the, 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 the structure of the building, fix the roof, fix whatever that building needs, clean up the mold, clean up the drywall, and renovate the property. That property, that building needs over $3 million, right? Originally, my bid was 3 million and some change for all of it.
For four.
Yeah, for the whole thing. Things changed. When you went in there, there's no lawn equipment, there's no fertilizer, we didn't know nothing about pumps, you guys didn't even know nothing about that. We didn't know nothing about the bathrooms, we didn't know nothing about the bridges, you know? So things changed. So I know it's not on the RFP, according to the bid, but things did change. Now, you guys want it back, you guys are more than welcome to take it, operate it, put it back, whatever you want. I have no problem walking away from this. But as soon as I walk away from this, I will never, ever look back. And you guys will be doing me a favor, to be honest with you. I'll be happy. Because this thing put a lot of stress on me, you know, I can't handle it no more. I'm getting tired. I don't need it. I don't need to make extra money. And I don't even think it's gonna make that kind of money. I don't even think I'm gonna bring back my return that I'm gonna invest in that thing in 20 years, if I live to 20 years. I'll be honest with you guys. So if you guys got the money, I suggest you guys to do it. You guys do the banquet, do the bar and grill, and open and operate it. Which I know you guys ain't, you guys will have this place closed down in six months. Anybody can operate that place. Believe me when I tell you this. You guys got the right man here to do it. It's gonna take time, but I need your assistance. You guys gotta get money for the golf course, you guys gotta get grants. That's why I told them, we'll start here. And once you guys get that course to where it needs to be, and I even have in the contract, I will be willing to support and help and work with you guys side by sides to get that golf course where it needs to be. Even if I have to manage it, even if we don't come to an agreement, and we, I manage it for you, I'll manage it for you guys. You know, and for the city till we figure it out. But not leave it closed. For next year, I'm talking, not this year. This year, it's impossible. I don't care what anybody says. It ain't gonna happen this year. We're talking for 2023. And I've spent a lot of time, a lot of consultations with these guys here. I flew them out from Chicago, some of them. I mean, there's a lot of money invested in time. I'm not doing this just, just to do it. And I swear to God, I'm doing this just to prove a point for the city, what this golf course can do. You know, I'm getting people bashing, I'm not responsible to cut the grass, am I? Do I need to cut the grass? I don't. Why, why are I doing it? Why are they bashing us on Facebook? Why? I mean, that's the city's problem. Why is it my problem? I even told Kim from Parks and Rocks, you know, she had a concert going on on this Thursday. I go, go ahead and do it. I'll make sure that grass is cleaned up for you, and it looks nice, so you can go ahead and do your event there. Did I knock, Kim or not? You know, I'm not getting nothing out of this. I'm not making revenue out of this. And I've spent, you know, I had, you know, the father and son, Shirley used to work at that golf course. She used to work for me at royalty man or two at the, at one point. So she left, she's not here now. And her son, and her other son, and her grandson worked almost six weeks on that thing to clean it up and cut it. Who, did you guys pay them? No. So, I mean, people bash, they just spread false information. People can talk, but once you put up your money, I wanna see somebody talk. I'm willing here to take care of this project, but I need the city's help. City's gotta buy the equipment. We have, didn't we put all this myake in the paperwork? What I expected from the city for the golf course, equipment, they gotta invest money, they gotta fix the, you know, fix everything in there.
I believe that.
Yes. So it's not like I separated the two. We separated them for a reason, because there's a lot of problems in that golf course. It's gotta be done on the city's expense, not mine.
But if I may interrupt you, so if, if that's the case, if, look, I see your point. Because quite frankly, I can speak for myself personally, until I walked, I had, you know, I thought, some of what some other, you know, members have said, wait a minute, it was operating, the gentleman left, okay, maybe needs a little work, but I mean, how bad can it be? Until I walked it with you, and I seen how bad it can be. And I'm not Ali Deeb, so I'm not a.
And it's worse now. It's worse now.
It could be. You know, I'm not Ali Deeb, I'm not a construction expert, I'm not a golf expert. I don't even know how to golf, okay? So I, I'm saying that freely. But I am in real estate, and just walking it, looking at it, and any human being can tell. Like, you mentioned the pumps, for example. You know, this councilman here, Councilman Muscat is very familiar with mechanicals. I have zero knowledge on mechanicals, but if, if a big piece of machine is halfway inside the river, that's not a good thing. I mean, even I can tell, this is not good. So I know there's a lot of work to be done. But at the same time, though, I cannot be personally, as a council member, in favor of separating the golf from the banquet, because it is possible, with due respect.
Everything's possible.
You know, I have a lot of respect for you, and I know you're of high character, and I know you will do it right. Once you commit, I know you'll do it right. But it is possible that we don't do this, and you come in next year and say, hey, I'm not gonna take the golf course. Because with due respect, earlier on, you said, I may not wanna do this anymore.
Yeah, yes.
I get it. But then what? Now we're stuck with, you know, just a guy doing the banquet, but not the golf. That's a big concern of mine. That's why I gotta have it together. So to me, the solution would be, a possible solution, not to use negotiation, would be, ah, how about we do this? And I'm just throwing it out there, this is not final, I get it.
I know what you're gonna say.
Everybody's gotta be involved. We'll maintain it, or we'll help maintain it to get it up to somewhat par. But meanwhile, you commit, not today, while they're doing the formal negotiations, you commit per the contract that you take it over next year, provided we have up to a particular standard, which obviously would have to be agreed upon. That would make me feel a little more comfortable, and I would get your side, and I would understand the city's side.
This is gonna take another month or two or three, and it's gonna cost me more money, more attorney fees. I don't wanna keep going back and forth with this.
But meanwhile, Mr. Isa, but meanwhile, Mr. Isa, I, if you, if you're committing to, okay, taking it over, provided it's up to this particular par of golf, or grass, or whatever it is that we wanna use as parameter, I'd feel okay with that, at least enough to be, to be able to make a decision. But you're not committing, and I get that. But if you're not committing, it's hard for me to commit to that.
No, I want the golf course, but I'm not gonna take the golf course and take the city's burden off you guys and put it on me.
I get it.
Because I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna let something break me or break anybody.
But not to negotiate it, and not to overstep my boundaries, and I wanna stay within my lane. But I'm just using a proposal here. If we were to possibly get it up to a particular level.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be at a level where it's golfable, and with a CVO, and safety, and everything running in working condition.
That's what the administration, again, I'm not gonna go past.
Yeah, that's what it's gotta be.
That's what would have to be agreed upon. But if, meanwhile, Councilman Wansel had some questions. Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah. You know, one of the first things I noticed was like the.
So we gotta talk to the microphone, Councilman.
Fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth words of this draft. It's proposed by the Isa brothers. And I was, I was a little bit surprised. I thought this was a contract that the city was gonna draw up, and you would agree to that. So I guess it's, you're proposing something that we have to agree to. Is that correct?
Proposed? What do you, I'm not understanding.
He's asking the jury, try to put this together and submit this, and you guys proposed this.
Yeah. Yeah, we proposed this, of course.
Okay, yeah. So I thought it was gonna be, now, you know, you gotta excuse me for, you know, I'm very concerned about the golf course, all 36 holes, and there's no one up here that has been more vocal about this golf course than me. I mean, I've, from the start, I've, when, before, right when we first got it, and I was on city council, I asked the mayor for updates all the time. And I was concerned constantly about this golf course. So forgive me for being passionate about the 36-hole Donald Ross-designed golf course. And I respect you, you know, and your, your business for, you know, the success you guys have. And I'm excited about, you know, your visions that you have for doing this. I mean, that's, that's really cool. But, you know, I'm thinking, you know, why does everything have to be, you know, a business venture, you know? You know, why can't it just be a golf course and a clubhouse? I mean, but it is what it is, and you know, your vision is, is kinda cool. But, you know, the golf course, anytime you mention it's Warren Valley Golf Course. It's the golf course. So that should be our main concern. We could have gotten this golf course up and running in the springtime for, you know, a large amount of money. But because of the neglect, and the lack of foresight by the city, it's gonna cost us millions of dollars now to do it.
Wait, just one second. Councilman.
What, what, that's true. And you know, you're a businessman, right? You're a businessman.
Yes, I'm a businessman. But, Councilman, I'm telling you, it is not in operating condition. I'm telling you.
Now, it's not.
But no, 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 no. After the gentleman left, it is not, did you walk it?
Yes, I've been on it.
No, no, not from the outside, from the fence.
No, I've been on the golf course.
I'm talking about go through the whole golf course. And if you seen it, I'm telling you, I have my granddaughter who's one.
Right now, when did you, when did you look at it?
If I walked with my granddaughter with that golf course, she'll say, ah, what was that, two, three, maybe two and a half weeks ago, something like that?
I'm talking about two, three months ago, the condition it was in.
It was horrible that.
But it took all this stuff out.
You know what? You know, this is, this is the thing. You know, this is Warren Valley Golf Course, right?
Mr. Wansel.
This is not Oakland Hills. You know, and people say world-class golf course. This will never be a world-class golf. We have like two world-class golf courses in the state of Michigan, maybe. You know, the Bear up, up north, and Oakland, Oakland, Oakland Hills. So we don't wanna make this a world-class golf course. It's been operable for 100 years the way it is.
So if you'll settle for it the way it was?
An average course.
Then I think the city should keep it the way it was, cut the grass, maintain it, and operate it as a public golf course, and make no money, I guess.
Well, you know what?
Is that what you want? I'm just, I'm just.
The golf course is a recreational facility for the residents and nearby residents. This golf course, in the past, since we've owned it, to the best of my knowledge, it hasn't cost us anything. I've never seen anything in a budget that budgeted money for the golf course. There's corner, this is about 250 acres. So no, no, no cost to us. But we're providing a service to the residents, an awesome service that not every other city can offer. We have little parks, this is 250 acres, we have little quarter-acre parks on corners in Dearborn Heights, that cost us a lot more to maintain than this 250-acre golf course. It's, it's a golf course, I mean, why do we have to like fix the wheel, or, you know, reinvent the wheel, or fix, if it ain't broke? You know, I know it's your businessman, and you wanna make money, that's obvious. And we just gotta have this course, it's possible. And, uh, we just gotta have this course, it's possible to have this course open. Wouldn't you say, if, if we went tomorrow, started working on it, it could be open by the end of the year, this summer?
No, not this year.
Okay, listen, okay, now, I've had different opinions about the greens being dead, but anyway. So to open for March and next year, it'd have to be ready at the end of this year, right? Yeah, over, okay, so that's what we gotta do. I mean, that should be number one and then, because this is, you can't wait, this is time sensitive, the clubhouse is not time sensitive. The clubhouse can wait ten years, you just do some minor repairs on it, open up the bar and, but this golf course is time sensitive. Every day we wait, the more it costs us. Same with the clubhouse, I'm sure, but still, this golf course, like Council Chair said, this is gonna get out of control where it's, it's not gonna be a golf course anymore. I mean, that's, our main focus right now should be, get the golf course ready and then you, you can start. Cause you ain't gonna do the clubhouse in a, a six months or a year.
I'm gonna try to get it on as soon as possible.
It could be, I mean, it could be done, but the, the golf course and the city dropped the ball. A business, you're a businessman, when you, when you have a vendor that you're using and you don't like that guy anymore and you're gonna get a new vendor, do you fire that vendor and then go into a contract negotiation with someone else? Or do you have someone lined up, so Monday you get rid of one, Tuesday the next guy starts, right?
No, but according to the, to you guys, you guys put it on bed and that's how you guys operate.
Saying though, this.
I mean, if I was the mayor, I wouldn't even put this thing on bed.
Yeah.
I would never put it on bed, just call it out, put it up on the, you know, on the, on the website, listen, the golf course is available for anybody. You guys wasted too much time and you guys didn't even need none of this.
We should've been negotiating with you last November.
Yeah, probably, probably, but I didn't know nothing about that.
Council Chair, point of order. Point of order, we, we have a motion on the floor and we've spending hours on this thing and either we vote on it or not.
Okay.
When are we voting? There's no vote on this.
Not voting.
No, we're not voting on anything.
Yes, we are, it's a motion on the floor for note and file. For note and file.
It's received, note and file, as mentioned, and again, this course, everybody knows the condition it was in. The administration did not drop the ball, we were trying to go full speed, trying to get this course up and running. And the long, every time we went in there, something was missing. That place right now, obviously, you know, we're trying to get records from the county to see what actually belongs to us, we're still working on it. They wiped everything out of that place, there's nothing, not shelving, nothing. So we thought, we gotta go in there and just start the golf course.
We've also extended his contract if I was.
Exactly, and, and, and you know what? There was a breach of contract and, you know, there was no money paid to the city, you guys can forey that, they did not pay the city, the previous concessionaire. So they owe us a lot of money still. So I can't believe this councilman over there, he's talking that the administration dropped the ball.
I never said administration, I said the city, the city dropped the ball, excuse me.
We did not drop the ball, we, we, we were trying to go full speed, trying to get this thing up and running. And this is a prime example right here, trying to prolong what, what needs to get done. This is note and file, we're supposed to negotiate this and, you know, I heard somebody outside. When I took a few minutes to go outside, somebody told Mr. Isa, from, I, I overheard somebody say, hey, what the hell are you doing? Just back off right now. Nobody wants this, this is ridiculous, like I said, you know, we're trying to do everything we can, Councilman. And don't get me started, okay, do not get me started.
Mr. Mayor, you're interrupting me while I was talking.
We try to do everything we can to get this golf course up and running.
And as a city.
If you wanna take liability yourself.
You'll get it up to.
Okay, if you wanna take liability for the city, as, as we mentioned, Mr. Deep was out there, he's checking the golf course. We, nobody can go, I, I would not allow anybody to golf on this golf course, so we make it worthy to golf on and also to get a CFO. Okay, we are, got our inspectors, are ready to go in there, make sure every time we do something, they have to inspect it, make sure they get a CFO for it. Right now, it's not the way, we don't want people to golf on this golf course, it's embarrassing. Even when it was left, the condition it was in, it was embarrassing for the city of Durbin Heights.
I agree, I mean, I, I agree, the golf course has to be up to, up to par and that's no pun, but, uh, but the thing is, is this, this, back in, you know, October, November, the past concierge, concessionaire was offered an extension that was, you know, I, I voiced my discon, my concern about it, because it was something that you're gonna get rid of someone right before the season starts. Which was ridiculous, you know, a six month extension in, into the April. And I said, you know, why don't we, we need some, either a one-year extension or, so at that point, we, we, if that was the case, you know, that, that contract was gonna expire, we had six months to find, to start the process, but we didn't start the process until March.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Corporation Counselor, we're gonna go ahead and, and.
Very briefly, we have to recognize that the level of breaches of contract by the prior concessionaire were more significant, especially as we went through the audit process and that revealed some of the problems. I don't wanna go into them all now, but that was part of what the genesis was for how this had ended up developing. And, um, I think it's unfair to the administration to, um, suggest that this was not dealt with, with, with speed.
Okay, thank you. So at this particular point, we're gonna go ahead and take this thing to a vote. And again, just to be clear, this is to receive note and file, the latest version of the agreement. And, um, I just, I just wanna make sure to take a little bit of, um, just a vibe. Are we all in agreement that we, well, actually, my personal proposal is I'd like to see personally that's to be the golf course and the banquet center. Is there anybody, I, I know, but we have to give direction to the.
We, but that, but that's got nothing to do with what's in front of us.
I understand.
Okay, so, so you're wrong, I'm telling you, we have a motion on the floor to either accept or deny this note and file. We're not going to add any more things to it.
Okay, but we have to give direction.
Well, then somebody's gonna have to amend the motion.
Okay.
Suggestion, you could vote on this and then you could do what you're suggesting, Council Chair, in terms of asking.
Correct.
Okay.
This is just received, note and file, it is what it is.
Okay, so we're voting on received, note and file, item twelve A, all, and this is a motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Constance.
What, what do we, what's this voting, just to receive that we?
No, we've got it, we've read it, we've seen it.
Okay.
We know of it, you call it whatever you wanna call it.
I think everybody, I think everybody in the city got it.
Right, so of favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Now.
Hour and a half for a yes and no.
I would like, I would like to have our administration look into and go in the direction of having a combined matter.
What I'm gathering, based, based on your comments, this is what I'm gathering.
Okay.
I'm gathering that you wanna see the thing combined together and you want some sort of concession fee, uh, linked in as well. And that's how I will talk to Mr. Isa's attorney, Mr. Shank. If that's not gonna work, then we should know one way or the other. Um, you know, he's been, uh, doing a great job trying to work with us on this, but if it's not gonna work, then we'll find out it's not gonna work.
Okay.
But Council Chair, just, in, in my opinion, uh, that we did let this go as a city, not just last year or the year before, but we, we didn't do our due diligence before that.
Thank you.
We need to do some help ourselves. I mean, we can't just put this burden on one person, it's, it's impossible. I mean, that's why I wanted something to do with Parks and Recs, we could go out and get grants, I want to help. And if people are so adamant, so adamant about a lot of things, and I'm gonna agree with Mr. Isa, you put up your own money. And you know what, you're so, everybody is so passionate about this, let's put a, a golf course millage on it, see how people like it then, okay? Uh, I, I mean, come on, that, you go to other cities that own golf courses, they have golf course village. How do you expect to, to operate a golf course without money to maintain it?
It's paid by the golfers maintaining it.
Okay, the golfers don't maintain it.
They, they pay for it though.
You got volunteers that golf for free, Tom, on the city's dime.
Next item on the agenda is item thirteen A.
I just, you know, we gotta, we gotta address the, the cutting of these greens.
We're already voted on it now.
Okay, let's go to the next item.
No, 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 because.
Next item on the agenda is item thirteen A, anybody wanna make a motion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Constance.
I moved at the business licenses for, uh, La Marana Auto Sales at eight-two-three-zero North Telegraph, Red Lobster Hospitality at six-eight-five-zero Telegraph and three-four-two Bar and Grill at three-nine-three-two Pelham, owned by a good Greek band, Jimmy Niko, Be Renewed, as outlined in thirteen A.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constance, supported by Councilman Muscat, all favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry, I, I take it back, any discussion? Okay, now, go ahead, all favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is members of the public, comments from council members.
Council Chair.
Sorry? Well, Councilman Wenzel first, then, go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, um, I just, you know, we cleared, cleared the room there, I don't know what happened, but, you know, I just, I just wanna make it, everyone know that I, I did some work and I notified all council members and the administration that I had people interested, businesses, groups and individuals that donate money to adopt a hole and maintain these greens two months ago, with, with no reply from anybody. I mean, I, I had this all set up, I, I had enough people.
With due respect, I, I think you better check your emails and, and, and remember your phone conversation.
Yeah, but you, yeah, you were saying, you didn't say, you didn't say yes or no.
You're starting to be your biggest cheerleader, seriously, I mean, you know, I'm letting go of some of the comments, but it does come a point where I'm gonna have to check you on your comments and do a fact check, because seriously.
I will.
You gotta be careful with those comments.
I, what, how'd you respond to that?
I, I don't remember the specifics, but I respond to every single email.
You responded with a different comment though, not, not related.
No, I always respond, I never not respond.
You responded.
Including the conversation with you. And again, I've been letting it go, but it gets to a point where now I'm gonna address it.
Let's go back to a meeting, guys.
Okay, so anyway, that, you know, that was basically, you know, but, you know, all that aside, you know, I, you know, I want, I wanna tell, you know, everybody, happy Fourth of July coming up here, God, God bless America and, uh, and one of the things is, well, the mayor left, uh, I, I, I wanted to talk about the Eaton Center and, and his, uh, vision of the Eaton Center. Uh, because there's, the rumors are going around now and there's nobody to squash these rumors with yes or no answers. Uh, we're losing, we're losing all kinds of people out of the Eaton Center and everybody there thinks it's gonna be closing. I mean, almost every person, you go in there and talk to them, they're all saying, yep, they're, I, I, I feel that it's gonna be closing, you know? But, um, so, uh, he left, so, I don't know, um, maybe he's coming back, is he coming back? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I, I've gotten a lot of, uh, questions about the Eaton Center and, uh, what, do you have any plans? I mean, do, do you plan on definitely, you know, keeping this open, you know, forever, like as long as possible or do you have any plans of closing it? What?
As long as he's alive, he'll stay open.
Yes.
As long as you're alive, okay, good, that's, yeah, okay, that's, that's great, that's good to hear, that's, that's, that's really good to hear. Um, so, you heard that, right? Yeah, okay, good. And, um, now, I know there's this, you know, concert in the park coming up, I'm, I'm sure, uh, Director Lawrence L is gonna mention it's something that I'm gonna bring my family to, you know, I like to, you know, bring the families, all these things. And, um, I've got a little issue here about, uh, uh, DPW, I don't know if, if, if Director Conrad's on here or not. But we have people that have, uh, garbage pickup on Fridays and Fridays are the days they, I mean, the garbage days are the days they sweep the streets. And when you pick up the garbage on, on a day that the city's not working, they have a hard time sweeping those streets unless they work overtime. So I've talked to different people in the DPW and they say that unfortunately Friday garbage pickups don't get their street swept as much as everyone else, so we gotta work on something like that. And also, um, I mentioned something about a study session on used, on used car lots and I, I wonder if we're gonna do, do that. And, uh, that's it, uh, just happy, happy Fourth of July, everybody, thank you for everything.
Thank you very much. Wait, uh, Councilman, who's next? Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Council Chair, and, uh, um, you know, long, very, very long meeting, ten oh nine, I just, uh, my wife's birthday is Sunday, so.
Happy birthday.
Watching this, which I believe she is, Leila, happy birthday, uh, I wanted to do that to her last year, but I forgot to. Um, I just want all the residents to know at home, I've actually had a huge migraine, I took a Tylenol from our, uh, our councilwoman.
Nurse Nancy here.
I've informed that the council chair that, uh, I'm gonna give my, uh, closing remarks and I'm not gonna be here for public comments, but I will be on my phone. I hope, uh, those can forgive me and, uh, happy Fourth of July, forgive me, I am so, so sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Councilman, go ahead.
Uh, a few things, um, I got a text where someone said I was sleeping, but my eyes, I had, had cataract surgery on both eyes in the last month and these lights in here are bright and I left my sunglasses in, uh, in the car and I didn't think it was appropriate to wear sunglasses in a meeting, so, uh, please excuse that. But, um, uh, uh, I'm talking about ordinance sweeps, I'm glad they're happening. I think the ordinance sweeps need to go move to the north end now, because, uh, I, I know you're, you're undermanned and, and I was hoping in the contract that the six-month provision for, would also extend to ordinance, because it's a shame that we train people and we spend money on training them and the next thing they do is they go off to another city and go work full-time there. That's, that's about just as, you know, might as well take a hundred dollar bill every day, roll it up and throw it out the windows, you're going down Ford Road. Uh, doesn't make any sense to me. And, um, uh, right now, the fireworks are out of control, I just got a text from somebody and I'm gonna ask the fire marshal, since we have had no rain and it's very, very dry out there, I can see some of this stuff landing on someone's house and igniting a fire, these are dangerous. It, 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 it's, you might as well shoot a live round of, of, of gunpowder, it, cause that's what it is. And that, it's, it's gonna fall on people's, somebody's going to die one day. And you've got people that don't know what they're doing, shooting them from city property, from the sidewalks, okay? And they're not supposed to leave the ground, that's the law, they're not supposed to leave the ground. So I'm asking the fire marshal to put a moratorium on this because of the, of the drought and anybody get caught, so, so be it, they get fined. Um, and, uh, you know, there's so much more I could talk about, but I'm gonna be here till two o'clock in the morning. So I, I've gotta stop now before I get carried away. Thank you for understanding about my eyes.
Go back to speaker, right?
Council Chair. Thank you, Council Chair, just wanna remind everybody, uh, who's going through hardship, uh, the tax poverty exemption are due by this Thursday to the Census Office. And, um, happy Fourth of July, everyone, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Constance?
Uh, thank you, Council Chair, happy Fourth of July to everyone and I hope they have an enjoyable time with their family. I think we need to remember that, so the prior operator, uh, I think it was Claire, was ignoring the, the golf course. And I, I saw that happen with the ice arena, I mean, there was an operator in there, uh, uh, the city attorney, Jeremy Atki, will probably remember, Jerry Carnegie, who used to just sit back and, and, and so we've got a new person in to hopefully run at least the, uh, the building, the banquet. He doesn't own the golf course, it's not his responsibility to snap his fingers and get everything cut and open and the golf course running, he doesn't own it. The city of Durbin Heights does. Nobody's gonna talk about developing or anything, but it's, it's a large operation, it's a lot of moving parts. Hats off to our city attorney, Jeremy Atki, negotiating with, uh, Matt Shank, I, I don't know that that's his area of expertise, but, uh, that's all I'll say, I said too much. So let's, let's get the process done and not have people come, used to hang out at the old golf course and say, hey, look, you know, you don't, gotta do this, you gotta do, gotta get a, a contract in place, agreement of the minds and, and let the, uh, new, uh, lessy get in there and hopefully make the improvements that need to be made. I won't even say that the golf course has to be linked with the banquet, I don't know that much about it to say one way or the other, if that's feasible.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
My, a real simple request, uh, I want our IT person to make it so that we don't get cut off all the time from the Zoom and that kind of thing. And the other thing is the air conditioner, I could not find a way to adjust that, it's cold, we were losing people, it's too cold in here.
Uh.
Council Chair.
Also, if you don't mind, Director, microphones gotta be closer, maybe move them up or something. Also, if you don't mind, Director, the microphones gotta be closer. Maybe move them up or something.
There's not one for me.
Okay, thank you.
Cut.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
I'd like to, yes.
Just real quick to address, um, Councilwoman Breyer's. We, I did have a meeting with, um, WDHT, Bobby Ann Cramp, and our IT director yesterday. And I have a note, he's going to be, look, he's looking into the unstability of our, of my iPhone.
And also the volume of the microphones, and I think we gotta move that one up too.
Um, mine is in regards to, uh, I, I wanna give kudos to the Dearborn Heights Police Department.
Um, there was a post and I, and I read it and, and, and I felt that, that the police officers definitely should get kudos. So, I'm gonna read it specifically. An observant resident and quick-acting Dearborn Heights Police Department personnel helped safely return a special needs boy to his home on Tuesday. The resident saw the youngster running in the street in the Van Born and Beach Daily area shortly before 10:00 AM and called the police. After a short search with the help of dispatchers, Officer Barker, Officers, uh, Officer Lindman and Pointer, Officer Pointer, helped reunite the child with his family. I just want to say nice teamwork for everyone and I appreciate our Dearborn Heights Police Department and you actually. Uh, any other council members that have comments? All right, hearing none. Next is-
Council Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I just, quick sugge- suggestion. I know in the past we had microphones on both sides of the council chamber. Is there possibly like put a remote mic so like the directors don't have to run back and forth? Mariana had to run that one time. I felt so sorry for her, running back and forth. Something like that possible?
Uh, I'm gonna keep them running. All right, next.
Council Chair?
The mayor has something.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I know the time sake, I'll try to keep it short. So, two items, you know, uh, so this, a few days ago, last week, I went to a conference. It was amazing conference. Had over a hundred mayors from both, uh, US and Canada. And the conference was, it's called, uh, Great Lakes Blue, uh, Blue Water Economy. And that's, and plus, one of the biggest concern was, uh, uh, any, any river or creeks, uh, that flows into the Great Lakes and the effects it's actually having on, uh, on the Great Lakes, the water, the drinking water and also the quality of the water. So, even, uh, I don't know, most of you probably don't know, but he was actually motivating me to take up scuba diving, Jacques Cousteau. Uh, his, his grandson was actually a guest, uh, guest speaker over there and he was talking about the seriousness about the Great Lakes and also the quality of water. And he's diving the, the lakes and he's seen the effects of the pollution. So, one of the things I brought up is the Ecorse Creek and also the Rouge River. Obviously, they flow into the lakes. And, uh, so, we had made good contact, you know, good networking with, uh, some of the, uh, there was a congressional delegates from different states and, uh, US Senate that were there. Also Parliament, Parliament, people from Parliament from Canada. So, we're gonna connect with them, uh, for Dearborn Heights. They've actually never heard of Dearborn Heights. Uh, so, uh, we, uh, we made great connection with them and they probably come down here in the next few weeks and they're gonna help us, uh, we, I talked about some issues we're having in the city and they're talking about some grants. They actually can, uh, even Canada was willing to help with some of the grants because of, obviously, because it, it does flow into, uh, you know, the, the Great Lakes is the biggest freshwater body in the world and everybody's concerned about that. And the other thing, real quick, uh, so this Thursday at 10 o'clock, we're having, uh, a meeting. Wayne County is actually, uh, helping out, you know, some of the cities are willing or want, wanted help. So, they're bringing all their directors, uh, to, uh, to our meeting here. We're having a meeting, uh, with the directors on a monthly basis, uh, in Dearborn Heights. So, what they wanted to do is come down on the same day and starting at 10 o'clock on Thursday with all the directors, the two chiefs and the commissioner. And, uh, they're gonna talk about some initiatives that county has that we can actually tap into. Uh, some resources, some grants, uh, uh, where we need help with. And, uh, so, um, mostly like their DPS, their grant people will be here. So, it's gonna be a huge event and, uh, thanks to, uh, Councilman Hassan Ahmed. He actually helped put this together and, uh, they did that, you know, in Dearborn. It was very successful. So, thank you, Councilmen, uh, for, for spearheading this. I appreciate it.
I think you, Mayor, good job yourself and, uh, Chief of Staff.
Yeah, thank you. So, this is gonna be great and I'll report out, uh, at the next meeting, you know, the progress and also what, what the takes from that, uh, that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, anybody else from administration? Oh, we got a line. Okay. So, uh, ladies first always, as you know. Whoever would like to go first, either ladies.
Hi. Gotta get my glasses on. Real quick here, I'm gonna make it real quick. Just, um, we have a primary election, August 2nd. Uh, we've sent out 10,000 applications for ballots. We've issued 3,500 ballots already, received 150 back so far. So, if you have your applications at home, get them in the sooner the better. Usually the turnaround is 24 hours. Um, and another reminder is, um, the whole state went through a redistricting. We were the third phase. Uh, we were delayed because of the special may election in Dearborn and which affected our district. Um, we do have some of the districts changed, um, you know, what you'd be voting for. Um, we do, new voter cards will be issued to all, um, all voters. Um, it's on our website what your new districts are. None of the precinct boundaries have changed, so your precincts are gonna be the same. Um, I do have a flyer up in the front if you need to look at it before you get your voter cards. And it's gonna be on your ballot too. You're gonna get the ballot that you're gonna vote for. Um, and it's been on social media.
Council Chair.
I'm sorry, I was, uh, I saw somewhere, can we vote online now or?
No, only accessible ballots, which is if you have a disability, you can do that. Otherwise, no. Or if you're out of the country, you can get a move ballot. Okay, but we got, we still got paper ballots.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up. Oh, we're gonna make you last here. It's all ladies in front of you. Nothing I can do about it.
I have a very-
Oh, you and Mike.
Sorry. Mariana Hernandez, Chief of Staff, I have a very quick update. Uh, today we finalized the purchase of two additional FEMA homes. Um, the money will be wired tomorrow morning. And with that, we're closing off our grants from 2016. So, thank you, Mr. Jamal, for that. Um, I don't see his hand raised. That's why I thought of stepping in and helping with that a little bit. Um, also, we are on our final week for the ARPA funds, um, RFP that's out there. So, hopefully by the next week, you're gonna get some updates with regards to who would potentially be helping us manage those funds.
Great. Thank you, Mariana. Good job. Next up, our Director Lawrence L.
Yes, um, I want to tell everybody, as, um, Councilman Wenzel said, we've got our concert coming up June 30th. Uh, we've got 50 amp fuse. It runs from 6:30 to 10:00 PM at the Warren Valley Golf Course. Um, everybody is welcome. We're gonna have a great time. And I also decided, um, last minute to have food vendors. I wasn't sure about the venue of where we were gonna have it. Um, so I would like possibly this honorable body to, uh, approve us to have food vendors for the concert for this Thursday. If possible.
Chair, can we suspend, uh, regular action for this?
I can, I, I need reset.
Can we suspend our, our normal procedure and vote on this so we can have this done?
So, you'd have to have, uh, there's certain protocols for adding something for a vote that was not a part of the agenda, that was not on the website. So, Madam Clerk, I think it was the right procedure?
I'm looking at Corporation Council because we had a procedure for temporary food licenses and I, I'm just gonna leave.
Can you talk into the mic, please? I didn't hear you either.
Okay, um, we did have a process for temporary food vendors or food trucks and I am going to defer that to legal.
Yeah, my sense is, is that there should have been an application that was filled out and, uh, then it would end up coming to the council for approval. That's consistent with what this body voted on previously in terms of the resolution.
But in this case, it's a city event that's being put on.
It doesn't matter that it's a city event. That's the process. Remember, it might be a city event, but the individuals who are involved are getting individual licenses themselves. It's not the city getting a license. They are getting a license.
So, can't, though, I, it's, it's the city event and we have vendors that come, but the issue is they don't make enough money to pay all of the fees and we're not gonna be able to get vendors, um, because of that. But I did speak a while ago in regards to my concern about the, the procedure policy that you were making, uh, making you aware of that. And I know that there was some discussion about possibly making Parks and Rec, um, you know, not have to, um, be in the same pot with everybody else because we, um, you know, are part of the city. And I think that maybe, you know, we got left out or something. I wasn't sure.
It's an issue with the licensee, not with the, the city. Kim is not a licensee. She's not the one who's getting the license. So, this honorable body could suspend the rules, uh, add on an item and basically vote to end up approving, I forgot what we have, a vendor license as well as a special use. Subject to approval through the clerk's office and from the building department director and authorizing them to make the decision for you with respect to this, which I would consider to be very unorthodox and questionable in terms of the special use because the ordinance specifically says something different, if I recall correctly, but kinda hard for me to address it when it's 10:30 at night and I wasn't aware that this was gonna come up. So, I mean, you could, you could potentially do that and say it's gonna be for the two-day period that's involved and nothing further.
Right.
Can, can, can the director have the, uh, the vendors fill out their paperwork and take it to the building department tomorrow and then the clerk just, just in case it's, it's doable? Is that something that we could do?
I, I actually went to the building department today because I was gonna pull the license myself and them just come in under Parks and Recreation.
I think the, the, the council, the Corporation Council said that we'd have to move to a suspend.
Suspend the rules to add this item to the agenda and make a motion to approve the licensees, whoever these people are, which I don't even know what the names are, provided the city clerk and the building department director, uh, find their applications to be in order.
I make that motion.
This is for a concert, right?
This is for Thursday night. We shouldn't have-
I make that motion.
It's like in two days.
Right.
Well, you have to, you have to suspend the rules first and then do the rest of it that I said.
Why wasn't this applied for earlier? I'm curious.
Uh, it wasn't because I wasn't sure of the venue of where we were gonna have it. And then with it changing back and forth, I, um, wasn't able to secure people because, you know, we weren't sure of the venue. So.
Where are you gonna have it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Council Chair, I know there's more, I'm sorry, Kim, I know there's more involved and maybe you know with the building department. I think they need a legal permit and they need a health, they do all the checking before they even get to the clerk's office.
Right, so with this motion, they'd have, it would have to start with the building department and then come to the closing.
Right, and I did get the documents from the building department. I wasn't aware of this. I thought that there was possibly something in the ordinance in regards to Parks and Recreation. Evidently, there wasn't. I found out this last Monday.
May I, may I suggest a waiver of, of, of the fees too? As the mayor pointed out, there is a fee requirement.
Right.
So, because it's a city event, that the fees end up being waived is, is well, um, with respect to that.
Council Chair, I, I move that we suspend the rules.
We have to vote on that first.
I suspend our rules.
Wait, 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 we have to vote on that first.
Correct.
To add this item to the agenda.
To add this item to the agenda.
Let's vote on that.
Second.
Okay, so motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Muscat, very much. Uh, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Council Chair.
Counsel-
I move for the proposal set forth by Corporation Council as stated earlier. Way too long for me to remember it all and I think it's on the record already.
I have another question.
And, and we can-
Well, we'll, we'll-
But let me see if we can get a second on that.
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, uh, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that? Go ahead.
Thank you. When we did the other temporary licenses, when they did, when we did the other, see, it's my problem too. When we did the other temporary licenses, after the process was, um, handled and we got the, they did the building, they did the clerk's office, they came back to your honorable body and got that approved.
Right, but this, what I ended up indicating was that this would be done, you would end up having the authority to end up making the decision with regard to the license in your office and the building department director would have the authority to make the decision. They are delegating.
And how long are we issuing the license for? Two days?
Two days.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you very much. Um, this won't be an issue with the July and the August concert, just so you know.
Just taking care of business right now.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, so let's go ahead and, and take a vote. Any other discussion items on this motion? Hearing none, let's go and take a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Next up, Director Dishroom.
Good evening, everybody, uh-
Good evening.
It's been a long one, right? Uh, a little, a little worn out, actually. Uh, just wanted to touch base. I'm Bill Dishar, obviously the Director of Ordinance and Force of Animal Control. I just wanted to thank your honorable body, uh, Council Chair, Corporation Council, Miyaki, the mayor, for, uh, moving the, uh, animal, attempted amendment, the animal ordinance forward. Now, we hit a rough spot there, but I think, uh, moving forward, we'll figure it out. Um, also, I just wanted to update the council and, uh, citizens on this past weekend. We did our ordinance sweep, uh, the southeast part of the city. And, uh, Councilman Muscat, we are moving to the north end in July, just so, just so you know. Um, over the course of the sweep, we issued approximately 200 violations. Most of violations for grass, blight and abandoned vehicles. In the coming weeks, the follow-ups in the area will be done and tickets may be issued to those not in compliance. Uh, next month for the sweeps, we'll be focusing on the northeast part of the city. Just like in 2016 when the ordinance sweeps were done, we will continue to send out letters from the mayor and brochures in advance before going out in late July to check for compliance in the aforementioned area. Like to thank the mayor, who has been very supportive of the ordinance sweeps. The mayor promised that there would be sweeps and he has held to his word. Um, I think that's it. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much and have a good evening. Unless anyone's got questions.
No questions.
No.
I was probably a little fast. I apologize. I, I get, I got in the zone.
Go home. You're not getting any overtime.
Everybody else wants to go home, so thank you very much and everybody have a good evening.
Thank you, Director. Next up, we have our in-house radio announcer. Go ahead, sir.
Well, hello. Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Um, congratulations on everyone making it. Four and a half hours, all right. I just want to talk about a couple of items. Uh, first off, the summer learning program and jamboree is in full swing. Wanted to thank the fire department for coming out to our JFK drive-through this past Saturday and all the work building maintenance put into preparation for the event. We had over 1,180 signups, uh, for our activity box program, which will be delivered, uh, the week of July 11th and delivered hundreds of bags at both our kickoff parties. Uh, tomorrow, Wednesday, June 29th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, we will have an art camp for little fish. Children zero to five are invited to participate in this art program along with a care driver. Music, crafts and games will be provided. Also, July 1, we will start our tiny art show. Display your talents. Pick up an art kit at JFK Library starting July 1 and return your art by July 30th to be part of our art show. Art will be displayed in August and winners will be displayed on social media. Uh, so that's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Anybody else from administration? So, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and go to public comments. The young lady there has waited patiently.
I'm gonna make it sweet because it's, uh, past my bedtime. I don't know about anybody else.
Mine too.
Anyway, um, my name's Kimberly Canalis. Um, my family lives on Haas Street. Um, we live between Berwyn and Norborn. Um, they've lived there about 15 years. Um, lately, the traffic's been getting really bad. Like, I'm talking like people flying down the road. The way it is, I don't know, unless I explain it like this. There is a stop sign that's at Kinlock and there's no stop sign all the way until the light. So, the problem is people coming from Berwyn, Norborn, Centralia, when they're leaving the Kinlock stop sign, by the time they get to my family's house, which is a block and a half away, they're doing 60 miles an hour. So, the neighbors across the street have to park their cars on the driveways and we can't let our kids play out on the street because we're worried about people coming and hitting our kids. So, I contacted the traffic enforcement gentleman and he came out the next day and brought the machine out in front of my parents' house. It so happens that 20 minutes before the machine got brought out there, there was another accident in front of my parents' house and somebody speeding down the street and hit somebody coming out of their driveway. coming out of their driveway. My issue is, the traffic enforcement guy, I'm so grateful that he brought the machine out there, but he didn't put the cord out there to bring the information back to the people to explain, to show you guys really the traffic that's coming through there.
I don't think they need the cord on those. Those are internally monitored.
Well, I, the, the highest we've got-
What I want you to do is give that to me.
I made copies for everybody and actually-
And I'd like to have one so I could take it to traffic and see if we request, and request a few stop signs.
Right. Because I, even on here, I did a little extra work because I've lived in the area for 15 years. I put a dot on each one of the houses that has kids under 10 years old.
I lived in that neighborhood. I grew up in that neighborhood. I know what you're saying.
It's horrible. The, the most, because the machine is right in front of my house. The highest that it's got was yesterday, somebody was doing 62 miles an hour, and it's flashing red. And it's just, it's nonstop. And when the machine's facing Kinlock, which is that way, I'm not good with my northeast, southwest, but if it's facing Kinlock, the people are coming from Kinlock with no stop sign all the way there and hitting 60 miles an hour easy by the time they get to Norborn. So within three months-
So you want it facing east also?
I want it facing any way you can get it or a yield sign because it's, it's, it's dangerous. It's very dangerous.
But ultimately, we need our police department to, to look into a lot of this because this is also problematic. I know on Evangeline between Warren and Ford Road, for that matter, on Evangeline, the same thing. You see people, I've seen them. But the problem is they're going so fast, you can't even catch their driving license. I'm going to even turn them in.
I can't. I can't. I've called, since the machine's been there, I've called three times.
So I'd like to call on our police department. I'm not sure if our chief is still on there or not. I can't see on Zoom here, but I'm sure the mayor would inform them.
We'll just take it, we'll just take it.
We've all been in favor of, of catching the speeders and ticketing them and doing whatever needs to be done.
It's scary.
Within the police department's authority, and I'm sure the chief will hear this.
I will, I will personally take that over to the police chief myself and see about getting something started at least in, 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 instead of, for stop signs.
Yes.
Because I got a one and a half-year-old. I'm sorry. Sorry, my fault.
Okay. The mayor's saying call his office tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, that's perfect. Okay. That's fine. I just want to get in the right tracks to get stuff going.
Thank you.
Because I can't have my one-year-old in the front yard. I've had two dogs already hit in the past couple of years because it's just, it's a speed strip.
Thanks for waiting.
Thank you for letting us go on that.
Thank you. Sorry.
And thank you for waiting, and God bless you for waiting.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next up. Go ahead.
Afaf Ahmad, Syracuse Street. Thank you so much for good questions. Mr. Dave Abdullah, you asked about the golf course. Since everybody, while I'm here, I've been getting a lot of messages because people are watching, and they said, in their understanding, it was a package deal. And I agree about that because we support package deals because I believe, I don't think if you're going to give the golf course to someone else, how about then the two, maybe two businesses are going to get into fight or disagreements. So it's not healthy for the city or the businesses who are going to take one or the, both of them. So that's a very good questions, and many people on my phone were supporting as a full package. But, but my concern to you is when you, when you are questioning the 10% profit worth coming to the city, if you're going to put all the burden on Mr. Isa, then we should give him also a break with those profit to take away or to do all this repairs for the golf course instead of the, if the city doesn't want to do the work. If the city will do the work, then yes, you need to get profit too. But if he going to take, do the work, then you should give him some, city council's supposed to give him some break, couple of years, maybe some break in order for him to be able to manage everything and be able to afford everything and pay all these expenses. But I understand his anger. I understand he's been frustrated. I've been watching social media. He used some language which is not proper and disrespectful for everyone and for, for the city council too. And I wish next time, Mr. Dave, if you can stop anybody who say not proper words, just not to allow anyone to use the same behavior. This is the first point. By the way, my daughter, Ella Mees, she gives a regard to everybody. She wanted to be here today, but she has to fly to North Carolina. I just dropped her to Chicago airport, and I came, drive five hours to come here, and I'm tired, and somebody owe me a dinner because I'm tired. I've been there since last night, and I'm tired. Okay. One more thing in regards to the wild animals and the issue that was going, going on about it. Just, I'm not an attorney, but I study, I read a lot, and I'm not an expert. Feeding any wild animal usually or generally, it's illegal. The issue we have with the citizens, they're not educated and they're following their emotions. So we need to educate the citizens about this issue, and I'm in favor of TNR because it will help a lot. Maybe many of you does not know what's a TNR. Again, it's a city, a business too, and it's the job to educate the citizen. And one more thing, what the city can do right now, there are certain fragrance that can be sprayed around the homes that can drive these animals away, or we can drive these animals to a certain location where they can get fed. Because some citizen does not understand that some food, the human food might kill those animals. I love, I love cats. I know Mr. Ray Muscat just wanted to sunken. When I bought my house last year, it came as a bonus with a rabbit and a squirrel. They're digging in the hole, and they're living under the ground and saving food. And now I end up with another squirrel. Maybe it's a girlfriend or boyfriend for the other one. I don't know. So I'm telling you, we need to educate people, and we need to do something to help the citizens. And there's a lot of things. I don't know anything about it, but I read, and we need citizens, it's their job to educate themselves too. Thank you.
Thank you, Afaf. Next up?
Hello. Almost said good morning. It almost is morning. Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. I had a lot of questions that I wrote down, so it's kind of going back to a lot of weird things. Regarding the body cameras, Chief Hart mentioned that they would turn on when guns are unholstered, but shouldn't they be on the entire shift? Like if an officer's out or like once he leaves the car or something? I don't need an answer for that right now because they're getting the program started, but if he could get back to me on that, that would be great. If the golf course is a lease compared to a concession year agreement, would we be able to get grants at all? Because if we're leasing it out to a private for-profit company, I don't, to me, I mean, I haven't looked into it, but to me, I would think that we wouldn't be able to get any grants under the Parks and Rec Department because we're leasing it to a for-profit company. And I would just look into that and make sure that that would be good so that we can get those grants because I think that's a great idea. If we don't have the staff to do a TNR right now, if, if they're getting picked up, what happens to animals right now if we're not doing a trap neuter and release program? Again, if an answer can come later, that's fine too. I saw several people that said regarding the ordinance sweep that just happened, they never got a letter. And there were several people that got letters a day or two before. And like I asked last time, just as a courtesy, if you're going to offer this, live up to your word. If you're going to say you're giving people three weeks warning, be a person of your word, be a city of your word. And then, let me just make sure I don't miss something. Regarding the golf course, I know for me, I, I said this back when you guys approved the concession year agreement. You guys dropped the ball on getting the information before you went out for RFP, and you, Isa should never, I said that, you can find the video on YouTube. You guys screwed him over on that because you didn't do the homework. He should never have been in a position where his bid would need to change because he didn't have full information from you guys. And I, if I were running a business that might contract with the city, I would never want to do business with this city just because of what you did to him. And you guys got to get that stuff figured out moving forward so that any project, you know everything before you go out to bid so that you can have a proper contract with everything that really needs to happen. That's good for everybody. And I'm glad to see you guys advocating for the city's interests on the contract, and I look forward to seeing how it progresses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Padaleary Vernon, Dearborn Heights. Mr. Abdullah, all your concerns on that contract are very warranted. I believe in all of them. One of them especially, it should not be a landlord-tenant agreement whatsoever. But also in that contract, there's a partner that says that Mr. Isa has an opportunity to purchase that clubhouse. That should never happen. Not, I got nothing against Mr. Isa, but none of that should ever-
I think it was, if I'm not mistaken, sir, I think it was first right of refusal, I believe.
Is that what it was?
It's first right of refusal.
So just for clarification, and I'm not going to take away from the time. Just for clarification for those members in the audience or residents, first right of refusal means if, if, the key word, if we decide that we're selling it, he would have the first opportunity to be able to match that particular offer that we agreed to sell it for. Is that correct?
That is correct.
But that was clubhouse only.
But that's if, yeah, but that's only if. We're not selling it.
But that was clubhouse only. The clubhouse and the golf course are one and one. From Warren to Hines, from beach to Golfie Manor, it's one. It should only be one.
Either way, we're not selling it.
Right. Fine. And all your, all your concerns in that contract, there's a lot of stuff in that contract needs to be gone over. Second thing is, what company is this course insured through right now?
I don't have the answer to that.
MMRA.
MMRA.
That would be through our risk management pool.
Okay.
MM up.
Through the city.
MMRA.
Thank you.
Why wasn't anything done about filing paperwork and stuff on the storm damage? Why weren't these trees cleaned up? Got insurance on the course. Does it cover it?
I, I don't know the, the-
It doesn't appear to, from what the chief-
What does it cover?
I think it'll cover bodily injury.
That's a good point.
Just general liability then?
Yes.
That's it?
I, I'm guessing.
Okay, but councilman, just to be fair, we don't have the contract in front of us to be able to say. If, if nothing else can, hopefully somebody from the administration can look into it. That's a good question.
So then it should have had, should have had insurance to cover all that because then you'd be, they'd be paying insurance right now to cut, to clean up half your course.
It's a good question. I don't have the answer, but the administration will look into it.
All right. And yes, he closed the course, he dropped the ball. Only reason that course is a pile of crap right now is closing the course for no reason whatsoever. Thank you. Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm back. Drapkowski, Columbia Street. I'll make this real quick. With the police body cameras that we're purchasing, did you purchase enough for the animal control officers and the ordinance people? Because I feel that they should have cameras also, because at times they do run into certain situations that just aren't comfortable. So are they available?
I mean, it's something to consider, but I'm not sure if we're absolutely ready to go ahead and-
Well, they're a city department, but they get, they get, you know, a lot of people that they're dealing with that aren't so friendly also. So they need-
I'm speaking for myself with due respect. I don't know if I'm ready to commit a million and a half or a million and a quarter to the ordinance department or something like this. Not me, but that's me.
For body cameras?
It'll be checked.
Yeah, it'll be checked.
All right. Well, I think they ought to have that safety feature. All right. And plus it takes away some of the liability from us too. So if you want to spend a quarter million dollars, you know, we spent what, 1.8 million on the golf course, and it's falling apart. So.
Which is a steal. Trust me on that.
Yeah, yeah. And Wayne County wanted to dump it too, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bilal Hamud, Outer Drive, Dearborn Heights resident. I'll keep this brief. First, I just want to say, I appreciate the mayor's commitment to upholding the Eaton Center and its programming. And Kim, I'm very excited to see what direction we take that because it is lacking in its programming. It really has been. And from the residents I've spoken to, we are long overdue for some change in that space. The other major thing I wanted to talk about, and, and really this is just to comment on the other resident's point who mentioned the speeding. Where is the city of Dearborn Heights at when it comes to speed humps? Because one of the things that I'd like to see implemented is wherever there are schools, parks, public spaces like that, or even in neighborhoods where there are 30% or more children, I'd like to see some form of speed humps implemented because we've seen it work in other cities. They're removable in the winter, so they don't get in the way of the snowplows. And it's been clear that it's not an education problem. Sinage isn't the only thing that's going to solve this, and even more policing in the neighborhoods is not going to be the silver, silver bullet that we need it to be because we're now putting people's lives at risk. Really, our community safety is what makes Dearborn Heights so great, and I don't want to see that be taken away by reckless driving. And signage, again, is not going to be enough. We're going to have to take a more aggressive stance. And I think speed humps, if you want to ruin your car, great, do it, and then you're not going to be doing it again. And so prevents those repeat offenders. But I just, I'm trying to get an idea of where Dearborn Heights is at when it comes to, to speed humps. And is that something we've considered doing in the past?
The only thing I can answer on that, I do know that from the different emergency-related departments said that they would not be able to do in terms of ambulances and fire trucks, et cetera, et cetera, in terms of humps. I, I'm not the final answer to that. I'm just telling you what they've mentioned in the past.
So that's some of the stuff, council chair, is you start losing funding, you know, for, but the last time we checked, you know, a few months back, when you, when you put speed bumps on especially main streets, and especially for emergency vehicles, they can't get to and from. And like ambulances, you know, police cars, it's going to be hard, especially an ambulance with somebody in the back. So we did look into it several months ago, and it was, it was not feasible. We can revisit it, you know, talk to other areas if you know any city other than a neighboring city that is doing it. If you know a major city is doing it, let me know, and I can reach out to their administration.
Yeah, I know Detroit has implemented it.
Other than, other than-
Other than Detroit, I'll, I'll look into it myself. I, I think it's worth revisiting, at least in a pilot capacity. And again, only in those critical areas, not in the main thorough ways, and not where there's emergency routes, but at least considering for some of those high-traffic areas where we are seeing those high-risk situations. But thank you for the, the clarification on that. Yeah, yeah.
We just talked, you know, we had, we had a little talk about this about a year or so ago, and one of the residents said that when you put a speed bump up, you stagger them from one lane to the other so the rescue goes, go around them. You know, that's what they, they do. So they-
Have somebody speeding and thinking they're on an obstacle course and end up in your front, uh, uh-
I didn't want to dive too much into it. I appreciate the clarification, and I, I look forward to the discussion. The only other thing I'll have to say is have a happy Fourth of July, and thank you to everyone who stuck around this long.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
So we're going to go ahead and, and go to, was there anybody else here in the audience? Seeing none? We're going to go ahead and go to Zoom next. I don't know who's first. I believe DB Lack was first. So go ahead and go first, sir, or ma'am? I'm not sure, honestly. Okay, so we had the same problem early on. You got to talk either really loud, or I don't know if it's your laptop. I'm not sure, but we can barely hear you. Sir, I can't, none of us can hear you in here.
All right.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to go to Hassan Jamal next. Hassan, please, two minutes. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, yes, we can, but let's, let me let the, okay, Mr. Jamal, one second. Go ahead. Go ahead, sir. Now I can hear you better. You have, you have two minutes, sir. Go ahead.
There's some nice courses around. Like there's Palm Beach, there's St. Andrews, there's, you know, Teeth of the Dog, Pinder's. I played all those courses. They're beautiful courses. That's not to brag, that's just to say, to answer to Mr. Alhaj, who said earlier, anybody that plays Warren Valley doesn't know this course. Warren Valley happens to be my home course, even though I've played all over the world. It's a $40 course that floods multiple weeks out of the year. It's never going to be a top-of-the-line course as long as it's in the flood plain. Right? That's my first part. Second part is, all you council members and the administration has been saying for weeks and weeks, months, that the course is severely neglected. It's been neglected for years. You're all in agreement with that? Who is the landlord of that? Who is the owner of that? Dearborn Heights. So you guys did drop the ball. For the mayor to say that they did not drop the ball, he's either lying or is negligent of the facts. You guys had oversight on that property, and you neglected to do so. It is your fault. And then you go and try to give that course to a good businessman who's going to try his hardest, and you try to saddle him with a course in that condition. I feel for the man. I understand his frustration. He shouldn't have to shoulder that responsibility when it's the neglect of the city, the administration, and the council that let that course get into that condition. I hope, I hope Mr. Isa can do what he's done with his other businesses and turns that place around and turns it into a gem despite the fact of what you guys saddled him with. And I'm going to get a hold of him and volunteer my help, either as a consultant or volunteer to go out there and help dig out sand traps. I'm going to contact him and help him to turn that around.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next up? Okay. Thank you, sir. Next up, we'll go ahead and go the director, San Jamal. You have three minutes, please.
Please note, on July 6, 2022, the Community and Economic Development Department of the City of Dearborn Heights, who managed the community blog grant, it's a hot grant, will have a public hearing at 4:00 PM at the Eaton Senior Recreational Center in Dearborn Heights.
Hassan, speak a little louder, please.
You all welcome to attend as part of community outreach and citizen participation. Number two, there's a lot of vibe, you know, regarding the Eaton Center. The Eaton Center is supported by CDBG funding. To my knowledge, we are paying for services and improvement and the mayor actually is supporting that. I never heard of anything other than that Eaton Recreational Senior Center staying and operational. That's my part as a city official. My passion is for animals. We need to share the earth with the earth's element. We are not superior on earth to any other being. We all equal under God. Please consider that when you treat other beings, whether trees, animals, whatever it is, we should be passionate about earth and have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Jamal. Next up is Lisa, Lisa Ferens. Please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please speak as loud as you can, but also please state your name, city and street you live on.
Lisa Ferens Oshansky, Dearborn Heights, West Pleasant Ridge. First, I would like to thank Chief Hart because he's brought us further in two months on technology than we have managed to achieve in the last 10 years. Secondarily, I'd like to ask about liabilities. I do notice that in the new city council chamber, for those who are unaware, we did have a woman fall from the riser where the council dais is at the last city zone planning commission meeting. And she did require EMT attention and to be taken for further medical. I'm wondering if some sort, as much as I hate it, some sort of yellow neon or something needs to go on that step to provide us any protection from liability. That is my only concern. Whoever is responsible for health and safety within the building, I would like you to take that on and resolve it. Also, from a liability standpoint, I am very concerned about Mr. Isa's people being on city property, operating heavy equipment without payment or an agreement. I feel that that creates a tremendous liability for all the tax pains. Death should occur. And that needs to be resolved before his people go back on the property with any sort of equipment. Beyond that, I would like, let's see, I'll ask Councilwoman Brier to take this on. Two weeks from now, when we have the next city council meeting, I would like to have a report out from the ordinance department. And I would like Councilwoman Brier to put that on the agenda. The ordinance department has continuously told us for over a year that they are very short-staffed. And when I watch the.
We lost it.
Wonder if they have ever worked outside of the government. I would like to know what he is doing to reach out and increase his staffing to an acceptable level. Because if he's only waiting for HR to bring him people or the little ad that's out on the internet, that ain't going to get it. And we are extremely, as someone who ordinance is not being enforced, that is a considerable problem. Last thing I have to say is we're going on five hours here. And quite frankly, a lot of that is because the people sitting at that table need a refresher for Robert's Rules of Order. You are spending a lot of unnecessary time, things that should be taken care of interdepartmentally. We have people that are at the director level giving us.
We're losing you.
Things on at 11 o'clock at night to be voted on. Unacceptable for everyone, for you and for all the citizens that have hung in here for this meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. Next up is Hussein Alhaj. Please go ahead, sir.
He's muted. Is he unmuted? There he goes.
Okay, now I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
First of all, if I may, through your council chair, I think last council meeting when Mr. Councilman Wonsol brought the dealership issues out, honestly, I'm kind of disgusted how city council meeting are being, being acted like sarcastic right now. People likes to attend city council meeting just for the show. If I'm not mistaken, Councilmen Wonsol have served on the planning commission for a long time. And I told them and I shared with all of you guys, if there's any sort of issue with you, Scott Lott, he could easily call the state of Michigan, the secretary of state. He can make that complaint and believe me, nobody wants to, to have secretary of state to come and pay a visit to their place. It's not a city-related matter whatsoever. So asking for a study session for this particular purpose is just a waste of time. Secondly, if I may, I would like to ask Corporation Council a quick question if you can allow me, Councilman Abdullah.
But he's got a question. You can go ahead and ask. Go ahead.
Mr. Miyake, and as, as an elected official, are they allowed to go to businesses and ask for contribution for the city in any sort of shape? Or even as an elected official, are they allowed to accept any sort of contribution from businesses who are technically contracted with the city right now and doing services for the city?
I would recommend against it. I think there's a problem with doing so in the sense that it might be viewed as being some sort of a bribe or be soliciting some sort of a bribe. So I would recommend against it.
Or that would be considered illegal or that would be considered as a wrongdoing?
I think it would be considered, I would view it as being very questionable and something that if we had, for example, an ethics ordinance, would be a good thing to end up saying you can't do. At least that would be my recommendation.
And as far as them accepting contribution from contracted facilities?
Are you still on?
No, he's saying as far as, so Mr. Alhaj, just, just to be fair, I, I don't know if this is honestly, if this is the right place or time to be able to question in that particular matter. Unless we know something is factual, just wouldn't be fair to, to ask a councilman, especially if they're not going to have an opportunity to be able to defend themselves.
Was he, is he asking me a question?
Yeah.
Oh, what was the question?
No, no, I was asking Corporation Counselor the question, Mr. Abdullah.
He's asking Corporation Counselor, but it's pertaining to you. So.
Okay, what is it? What did he ask?
You want to know the question? Okay, can you, the council would like you to repeat the question, please.
Can you speak up, please?
Going around through the city and asking business people for contribution to take care of the golf course. Did anybody through the, through the administration ask you to do some, um, so on some?
He's, he was asking Corporation Counselor if it's okay for any council member to ask for contributions on behalf of the city for entity of the city.
I never, I never asked for contribution on behalf of the city. I said there was a, there was a, there was a, a non, there's a nonprofit organization with liability insurance that would, is, would, would take charge of this. And there would be liability insurance for, for the operation. It's a, a public entity and it's technically or not officially known as the Friends of the Warren Valley Golf Course. Nothing to do with, nothing to do with the city. I never said that. I've never asked one business to do this for the city. I did said do it for the golf course. Sorry if you were mistaken on that.
Well, you're asking those business on behalf of the city. The city owns their golf course.
Well, we have, we have people cutting the grass right now that don't have, don't own the golf course.
Okay. And as far as you accepting contribution from, from contracted people who are actually doing.
I haven't accepted one penny in contributions.
Yes, you are.
Okay. So just, just to be fair, Mr. Alhaj, if you'd like, you could either email me. I'll forward it to Corporation Counselor between him and Councilman can answer your questions. But honestly, I don't want to go into a personal attack type of vibe on this thing. So at, at this point, or you're welcome to email the councilman directly to have him answer you if you'd like.
You got it, Mr. Abdullah. I would definitely send you an email first thing tomorrow morning.
List, list the business.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else on Zoom? And anybody else in the audience?
Councilor.
Wait, Councilman, go ahead.
I'm going to do the same thing. You want to do a motion to adjourn to Dearborn Heights City Council Regime Meeting?
Support, support. A motion adjourned by Councilman Nancy Guire, supported by Councilman Hassan Ahmad. Meeting adjourned.
All in favor?
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it.